I'll call this meeting to order of the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Dr. Cash, you'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
(inaudible)
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos. Creemos que todos ustedes ya tienen aparatos para la interpretación, pero si no los tienen pueden vernos a mí o a Sofía para conseguir unos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. We have headsets for the hearing impaired if you need them. Dr. Cash, introductions, proclamations, and recognitions.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We'll start with some proclamations and I'll ask Dr. Drati to go to the podium. This evening we welcome the Dos Pueblos High School's award-winning hacking team. John Grosen, Brandon Dutcher, Kenzie Tugama, Kenyon Pratter. This team won first place in the PICO CTF, an online computer security competition hosted by organizations at Carnegie Mellon University. Over 3,000 high school teams competed. The competition lasted 12 days. Though the Dos Pueblos team completed all the challenges only in five days. Well, I'll call their names up in a second. Yeah, I'm sorry. This is the second year in a row that the Dos Pueblos team has won this nationwide competition. The team members receive a $6,000 combined prize, along with $4,000 to Dos Pueblos High School to support computer science programs. In addition, the team will receive a paid trip to Carnegie Mellon University to accept their award. Tour the campus, meet with the dean of engineering and other faculty, and sit in on a computer security class. Sounds like a nice recruiting trip to me. It'll take, we believe, I think, sometime in March. Does that sound right? Okay. We know that behind these immensely talented students are very supportive parents and I'd like them to stand and be acknowledged. So will the parents of the team please stand? And with that, we'll ask the students to come forward. John Grosen. Brandon Dutcher. Kenzie Tugama. And Kenyon Pratter. I don't think at any point in my career as a teacher that I would be recognizing hackers. But here we are. It's a tremendous skill. Let's give these wonderful gentlemen a round of applause. Board members?
I would just like to ask a question. Have you guys been together for your educational career? Are you friends since you grew up? Or you just come together at high school?
Yeah, most of us met in high school.
Yeah.
Friend and I met in junior high, but before that we had never known each other.
And I've known Kenyon since junior high.
Junior high. Okay, that's fantastic. That's wonderful. Ms. Parker?
I would just like to add that it's nice to see you, Brandon, in a different context since I got to see you playing the clarinet on Sunday in the U-Symphony. So were you at the U-Symphony as well?
Yeah.
Yeah? What do you play?
I play viola.
The viola. So, you know, it's a multi-talented crowd, so congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations.
I would like the afternoon one to thank the parents, but also just to introduce one of the parents, Yvonne Degru. She happens to be the president of the Goleida Valley Union School District. So you can stay the whole meeting if you want. No, that's okay.
Good meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your dedication to education.
So a couple of announcements. Our all-district honor band concert takes place Thursday night at our newly-modernized Lacumbra Junior High School Performing Arts facility. That's going to be fantastic to get to hear that sound. The Santa Barbara Education Foundation Hope Awards are taking place on Thursday, April 16th. We have an incredible keynote speaker, William Adams, who's the chairperson of the National Endowment for Humanities, will be the guest speaker. And the emcee will be five-time Emmy award-winning journalist, Giselle Fernandez. The foundation is going to be recognizing a business, Village Properties, a leadership person, the Santa Barbara Garden Club, and a volunteer honorary, Jim Kearns from ICANN. Tickets are available now by contacting the Santa Barbara Education Foundation. This Thursday, February 6th, is Girl Day and it's a day celebrating girls and women in engineering. The event is intended to encourage girls to consider a career in engineering. The Girl Day webinar will allow students to hear female engineers discuss why they love being female engineers and what they did to get to where they are today. Our elementary schools are preparing for Read Across America Day and if board members, you're interested, please don't forget to sign up and come in and read to one of our elementary school students. On Saturday, March 7th, Big Bad Voodoo Daddy is going to perform a benefit concert for the Lacumbra Junior High School Foundation and it will be a tribute to Ike Jenkins. The spring theater performances will soon be underway and there are flyers in the back for everyone to look at. Looks like a great lineup of musicals. And then amazingly, this past Saturday, the mock trial competition took place at the Santa Barbara County Courthouse. And then for this next weekend, they have the semifinals and finals. And this is a county competition and the four teams in the finals are San Marcos, Santa Barbara, Dos Pueblos Varsity, and Dos Pueblos Junior Varsity. All four teams from our district. Great work by the students, great coaching by attorney coaches, and great leadership by our teacher advisors at all three of our high schools. And with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Board comments and correspondence. Ms. Adelson?
I had the experience of coming to this room last night and sat in on the special education workshop on dyslexia and watched the movie about people that have experienced dyslexia. It was a wonderful presentation by Cherie Ray and we had a great turnout and that was really nice. And then the other thing, on Saturday, they had the dedication that I attended of the batting cages at Santa Barbara High's opening day for baseball and that was fun. It was dedicated to Coach Remp and, you know, a very well-attended game against San Ynez and it was very touching. The San Ynez team presented Coach Remp with an autographed bat. A very classy moment that they recognized him also.
Ms. Parker?
I just want to be sure that we're all aware that this Thursday at 7:00 PM, there are a lot of conflicts. But one great possibility for the community to go to is to see the American Scandinavian Foundation of Santa Barbara and the Center for Global Dialogue that's bringing the Finland's Educational Reforms, What Can We Learn?, a forum with the Consul General of Finland, Juha Markkinen. So if you're not at Honor Band at Lacumbra, then that might be really interesting to go see that. That's at the Faulkner Gallery. 7:00 PM.
Last night I was at the Faulkner Library for a presentation by What Is Love? This happens to be the Teen Dating Violence Prevention Awareness Month, February, and found out that one in three relationships of our teenagers, there is some type of abusive relationship. Kristi Haynes has done a great job putting on workshops for our teenagers, has 20 or 30 college counselors trained and ready to be of help at our high schools. It was just great to see the young people, both men and girls, participating in roundtables. I had really a lot of fun at Adam's school last Friday. It was Grandparents' Day. And evidently, four years ago, the principal came up with the idea and had Grandparents' Day and 15 grandparents showed up. Friday, the auditorium was standing room only. That's how far that program has gone. And it's something that other schools, I mean, I've been involved in Grandparents' Days at every school my children have been at and my grandchildren. It's a great way to build a group of supporters for a school. And then last week, we also had the facility workshop right here in this room and we had great participation, great presentation, looking at the long-range plans and how we're going to go about coming up with ideas of what our schools need and the way to get parent participation and community participation. It was an outstanding workshop that we had. So I appreciate the fact that the board was there and Dr. Cash and your staff and the public. It was very worthwhile. Anything else? There was no closed session action and public comments from non-agenda matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education.
Dr. Paz?
We have six speakers tonight and so I'm going to call the first person up and call the second person. So if the first person can come up, that would be perfect. First person is Aracelia Paricio. And this person that will be followed by Denise Núñez.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la junta directiva y todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Aracelia Paricio. Yo soy la madre de un adolescente en el noveno grado en Dos Pueblos High School. Estoy tomando la clase que debe darse por Padres Adelante de Padres Unidos para Dos Pueblos High School y Goleta Valle Junior High. Estoy aquí para apoyar las recomendaciones de Padres Unidos y la obra del distrito escolar a través de su programa de igualdad de oportunidades, perdón, de las escuelas. Me refiero a la preocupación por los estudiantes insuficientemente representados que son elegibles para estas clases avanzadas y que no están tomando esas clases. Estos estudiantes pueden terminar tomando mucho más tiempo para llegar a la meta de graduarse, listos para la universidad, y estos estudiantes están en riesgo de aburrimiento en las clases que son demasiado fáciles para ellos, posiblemente incluso salir de la escuela. Es usted es elegible para las clases avanzadas? Debe estar en esas clases para que puedan graduarse, ir a la universidad y también ahorrar tiempo, dinero en el futuro cuando entonces entran a la universidad. Por favor, vigilar y garantizar que todos los estudiantes elegibles para tomar clases avanzadas se les dé esta grandiosa oportunidad. Gracias por su tiempo. Soy Aracelia Paricio.
Good afternoon, members of the board and all present. My name is Aracelia Paricio. I am the mother of a teenager in the ninth grade at Dos Pueblos High School. I'm taking the Padres Adelante class conducted by Padres Unidos for Dos Pueblos High School and Goleida Valle Junior High. I am here to support the recommendations of Padres Unidos and the work of the school district through its Equal Opportunity Schools program. I am here to express my concern for underrepresented students who are eligible to be in advanced classes and who are not taking those classes. These students may end up taking much longer to reach the goal of being college-ready. These students are at risk of boredom in classes that are too easy for them, possibly even leaving school. If they are eligible for advanced classes, these students must be in those classes so they can graduate, go on to college, and also save time and money in the future when they enter college. Please monitor and ensure that all students eligible to take advanced classes are given that opportunity. Thank you for your time, Aracelia Paricio.
Denise Núñez, followed by Rafael Martinez.
Buenas noches, miembros de la mesa directiva y todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Denise Núñez y mi hijo es Javier Díaz en Islavista Youth Projects, con terapia en lenguaje, y Samantha Díaz en Dos Pueblos en Educación Especial, ambos etiquetados como English learners. Yo vengo representando la clase de Padres Adelantes de United Parents, o Padres Unidos, de las Escuelas Dos Pueblos High School y Goleida Valle Junior High. Mi sugerencia y petición esta noche es que los padres de los niños con educación especial y de los estudiantes de aprendizaje en inglés sean informados por sus consejeros de la escuela acerca de la reclasificación y la educación especial y las opciones que están a su disposición para ayudarles a hacer la transición de estos programas, tanto sean elegibles. Personalmente, yo no conocía sobre la palabra reclasificación hasta que conocí a la señora Linda Guereña. Gracias a Dios y a una tía que tomó su clase de proyecto de padres, fue de gran ayuda para ella como madre de una niña con educación especial, sin contar adolescente. En esta clase, yo conocí el concepto de reclasificación y que mi hija era elegible. Hoy, gracias a la señora Linda Guereña, mi hija está un paso del proceso. Y al igual que yo, sé que hay muchos padres que no conocen el término ni la oportunidad que no hacer reclasificados se están perdiendo. Por favor, necesitamos su apoyo recibiendo la información necesaria para poder hacer lo mejor para nuestros hijos. De antemano, gracias y gracias por su atención. Mi nombre es Denise Núñez.
Good evening, members of the board and all present. My name is Denise Núñez. My son Javier is in Isla Vista Youth Projects Language Therapy and my daughter Samantha attends Dos Pueblos High School Special Education. Both are labeled English learners. I come representing the class Padres Adelante of United Parents, Padres Unidos, at Dos Pueblos High School and Goleida Valle Junior High School. My suggestion and request tonight is that the parents of children in Special Education and English learners be informed by their school counselors about reclassification and Special Education and the options that are available to them to help them transition out of those programs as soon as they are eligible. Personally, I did not know about the word reclassification until I met Mrs. Linda Guereña. Thank God and an aunt of mine who took her Parent Project class and it was of great help to her as a mother of a teenage child in Special Education. In this class, I learned about the concept of reclassification and I discovered that my daughter was eligible. Today, thanks to Mrs. Guereña, my daughter is in the process of getting reclassified. As you know, there are many parents who do not know what it means to be reclassified or have the opportunity to be reclassified and their students are missing out. Please provide us the information that we need to be able to do what is best for our children. Thank you for your support and attention, Denise Núñez.
Rafael Martinez, followed by Alma Aguilar.
Buenas tardes, estimados miembros de la mesa directiva and persons present. My name is Rafael Martinez and I'm a parent of two students. One of them assists at Goleida Valle Junior and the other at Dos Pueblos High School. And I'm assisting in the classes Padres Adelante offered by Padres Unidos for these two schools. This class is helping me provide guidance to my students, giving me accurate information about the steps that need to be taken for a better future in their academics. It would be marvelous for our schools to include in their LCAP more educational programs and workshops such as Parent Project and the Padres Adelante class offered by United Parents or Padres Unidos. In this way, the parents are better informed and they can help improve the quality of their contributions to the education of their students. Thank you for your time and attention, Rafael Martinez.
Alma Aguilar, followed by Felicitas González.
Estimados miembros de la mesa directiva de educación y todos los presentes, muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Alma Aguilar. Tengo un hijo en la escuela La Cuesta y estoy aquí con la clase de Padres Adelante impartida por Padres Unidos en la escuela La Cuesta y Alta Vista. Quiero hacer una petición sobre una necesidad que nosotros como padres vemos para nuestros hijos en la escuela La Cuesta. Entendemos que nuestros hijos están en dicha escuela para recuperar créditos y sabemos que las clases que toman son de base. Pero también nos gustaría que se ofrecieran otras clases electivas, por ejemplo, de arte, baile, canto, costura, carpintería, o mecánica, para motivarlos y tal vez inspirarlos a alguna vocación. Nosotros vemos que en las preparatorias tradicionales tienen programas especiales como la Academia de Ingeniería. Pues a nosotros nos gustaría que también en nuestra escuela de La Cuesta hubiera algo especial para nuestros hijos. Gracias por su atención y espero que por lo menos se empiece a considerar esta necesidad de los estudiantes de La Cuesta. Gracias.
Members of the school board and all present. Good evening. My name is Alma Aguilar and I have a son in La Cuesta High School. I am here with the Padres Adelante class offered by Padres Unidos at La Cuesta and Alta Vista. I would like to request about the need that we as parents see that our children have at La Cuesta High School. We understand that our students are in that school because they need to make up units and I know that the classes they take are mostly core classes. But I would also like to see other elective classes being offered, for example, art, dance, singing, sewing, carpentry, or mechanics, that could motivate them and possibly inspire them to find a vocation. We see that traditional high schools have special programs such as the Engineering Academy. We would also like to have something special to offer our children at our school of La Cuesta. Thank you for your attention and I hope you consider this need of the students at La Cuesta.
Felicitas González, followed by Kenneth Locke.
Miembros de la mesa directiva de educación y otras personas presentes, buenas noches. Me llamo Felicitas González y soy madre de un estudiante de la escuela La Cuesta. Estoy participando en la clase de Padres Adelante impartida por Padres Unidos. Quiero aprovechar esta oportunidad para hacer un reconocimiento del personal de La Cuesta, especialmente de la directora Fran Wagener y el personal de la oficina. La señora Wagener siempre hace lo posible por estar disponible para atendernos a los padres cuando tenemos una consulta o preocupación, incluso si no hemos hecho cita con antelación. Igualmente, mi experiencia con el personal de la oficina es que siempre te recibe con amabilidad y una sonrisa y tratan de ayudar en todo lo que pueden, haciéndote sentir valorado. Muchas gracias por su atención. Mi nombre es Felicitas González.
Members of the school board and all present. Good evening. My name is Felicitas González and I am the mother of a student at La Cuesta High School. I am attending the Padres Adelante class taught by United Parents, Padres Unidos. I would like to use this opportunity to recognize the staff at La Cuesta High School, particularly the principal, Mrs. Fran Wagener, and the office staff. Mrs. Wagener always makes herself available to talk to parents when we have a question or concern, even if we have not made an appointment in advance. Likewise, my experience with the office staff is that they always welcome you with a smile and kindly try to help you every way they can, making you feel that they value you. Thank you for your attention. My name is Felicitas González.
I'd like to thank all of you parents for being here and participating individually and collectively. It's very important and we understand how important it is. So thank you for your comments.
Mr. Kenneth Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before the city council did a public comment and mentioned I'd be coming down here tonight. As I mentioned to them, I was still pushing the interdisciplinary perspective and the idea is interdisciplinary discipline. I mentioned to them the connection between entertaining a relationship with a discipline and becoming disciplined. And it turns out through the athletic discipline of tennis, I represent the first tennis player who actually understands the rewards, say, or what you'll accomplish through becoming disciplined, you know, and taught, educated, in relation to what you ultimately will reach. And as I mentioned at the city council, I mentioned the whole basis of becoming holistically healthy and that's in relation to being able to demonstrate the exercise, the fundamentals of the exercise, the composition, in relation to the use of both arms. And then the idea that the basis of learning in relation to the integration of the mind and body, I'm actually here teaching it in relation to complete knowledge for the mind, complete exercise. And I'm sorry to have to inform athletes or tennis players or the fact that historically tennis has not been based on it being a discipline, where you actually become disciplined and actually reach and obtain the goal and the rewards associated with that relationship. And let's see. So the idea now is that currently, say, within your athletic program through the means of tennis, I'm sorry to say that the tennis players or the athletes are not being disciplined. And the idea is that they're not actually obtaining, again, reaching their highest potential. They're actually only developing one arm and for the sake of just competition. And historically, that's been kind of the norm. What I'm bringing to the table is kind of new information for education and again, in relation to interdisciplinary. And then the idea that
You have 30 seconds.
Once the educators, teachers, and students can recognize the whole basis of developing a sound mind, sound body, and recognize that as being an educational standard, that'll be kind of what I'm recognizing as being kind of a renaissance for education. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to item D, acceptance of donations for February 24th, 2015.
Move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Discussion?
actually reach the, and obtain the, the, the goal and the rewards associated with that, with that, that, that relationship. And let's see, so the idea now is that currently, say, within your athletic program through the means of tennis, I'm sorry to say that the tennis players or the athletes are not being disciplined. And the idea is that they're not actually obtaining, again, reaching their, their highest potential. They're actually only developing one arm and, and for the sake of just competition. And historically, that's been kind of the norm. What I'm bringing to the table is kind of new, new, new information for, for education and again, in relation to interdisciplinary. And then the idea that-
You have 30 seconds.
Once, once the educators, teachers and students can recognize the whole basis of, of developing a sound mind, sound body, and recognize that as being an educational standard, that'll be the kind of what I, what I'm recognizing as being kind of a renaissance for the, for education. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to item D, Acceptance of Donations for February 24th, 2015.
Move to Accept with Gratitude. Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll go on to section E, Consent Agenda.
... safety measures and how to better create safety around that for our school sites. So we are starting that process. We're going to be working with the Department of Homeland Security and the Joint Regional Intelligence Center.
Right.
To really flesh out our safety plans.
And the reason I was asking is because I know that in the past, and a little further in the agenda, we're talking about facilities use. And one of the things that struck me about facility use is that it's really clear that, you know, our facilities can be used by law enforcement at no cost. And then I was thinking, a few months ago, I think we had a drill at DP.
Yes.
And then I was thinking, well, okay, that's responding to school site. And then going back in terms of a training I went to, one of the school board members happens to be, his full-time job was actually doing site assessments of schools. And so it occurred to me to kind of put the pieces together and ask you that question. So I'm glad we're doing that and trying to incorporate it back. So it was just more for an information purpose that I want to know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Idelson?
I thought they were very thorough, and I like the fact that many of them just referred to the board policy under the heading. I think that's a good way to go, you know, that they link to that.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing. By the first time in six years, I really felt they were personal. I felt they showed a little bit of personality and self-thought and self-reflection, not a regurgitation of a lot of policy and, you know, paragraph after paragraph that was uniform across the schools. So whatever you're doing, I think this is far, far superior than I've seen before, and I appreciate it very much. And I'm happy that you did get to look into the cellphone issue because I don't think we're confiscating cellphones. Thank you.
Okay. Just one quick question on the Dos Pueblos. When I know that in the past there have been concerns about the bells at Dos Pueblos when being able to be heard everywhere if there is a, if there is an emergency. And it's, you know, looking through it, it sounded like the voice over internet, that that made it so that everybody could hear everything, and that that isn't an issue. But I just wanted to check in to be sure that that is true.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
But anything could fail at any moment on any day.
This is an action item. Do I hear a motion?
I will move to approve the school safety plans for Harding University Partnership School, Monroe, Dos Pueblos, and Alta Vista La Cuesta High Schools.
With the understanding that Harding may be changed regarding cellphones.
Yes.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trina.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I, may Mr. Trina, Mr. Handel, and Dr. Jodi assume that the template is acceptable and the rest of the school submission will be in that format?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item G3, approval of national music standards adoption.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This matters before you. I, we understood that there might have been some trouble with some of the links on the, on the, on the website. So you have paper copies of that, and it's back before you for approval. And Mr. Handel has the item.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cash. Board members, I apologize for the glitch. I, I put those hyperlinks in myself, and they worked. But anyhow, I went back to the board policy 6142.6 to ensure that we followed the process outlined by board policy. I checked in with our music, our elementary music teachers. And then, and something I didn't include in the memo is the fact that we want to adopt these music standards strictly for grades K through six at this point. We have not had discussions at the secondary level to adopt these particular standards outside of music and outside of grades K through six. So I want to be real clear what we're proposing tonight. I hope you've had an opportunity to take a look at all the, the information that are outlined in the National Arts Standards. It makes me cringe that we had to print out all of these, these pieces of paper, but, you know, sometimes we've got to do what we've got to do. So any questions, I'm open to them right now.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I think that the art standards are great. And I guess my, my first question is, is really clear who's going to teach the music standards. Who's going to teach the other art standards? Is it going to be classroom teachers? Is it going to be, you know, who's taking on, especially for like the performing arts piece and the dance piece? Is that classroom teachers or is it the music teachers or?
That's a great question. That's something, when we look at our visual and performing arts plan, we're going to have to look at incorporating that language as to who is implementing those particular standards. Because at this point, our music teachers have been tasked with music standards. At this point, taking any more standards to our, our elementary teachers might push them over the edge.
Yeah.
So that would take a longer discussion. And perhaps in our visual and performing arts plan, that's something we'll have to put much more thought and time into.
Okay. Because I, I, I wholeheartedly support the standards, but that's what I really want to be cautious of. When we are adopting the music standards, it's really clear that this is aligning with what we have in terms of personnel to do. But we, you know, we have classroom teachers that do a lot of these pieces. But, you know, I know that it's never been looked at in a, in a, you know, K six way, or a TK, or a preschool six way, because these are down to preschool level. And, and so I just, I don't want that to be something that gets put on classroom teachers at this point. And I want to be careful that in this adoption, that there's not that expectation, that they're there, that as we move forward with the visual and performing arts plan, that that's something that we can refer to. But at this point in time, that this is not something that we are going to turn around and say, hey, the board adopted these standards, you're going to do them tomorrow. So that's my only concern.
Good clarity.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that, because that's not what we want to get out to our teachers.
It does bring up a question. The agenda item says approval of national music standards. But the document of G3 says adoption of national art standards, which is far more drawn.
Encouponsing. Yes.
So since we advertised it as national music standards, what will we be approving tonight? And in line with Mrs. Parker, saying music is, is something that we can do.
What we're proposing tonight is the music standards portion of the national arts standards. That's what we're proposing tonight. I included the links to dance and theater and visual arts simply because that's what's outlined in our board policy, not for adoption tonight.
Thank you for making that clear.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
So, Dr. Paz?
Just clarifying question. So in AR 6143, in the first section, if you go to that, it has grades one to six. And then right below that, it says elementary, middle school. Is that just the wording?
That's just the wording.
Okay.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the national music standards adoption.
For K through six?
I'll second it.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for all the work on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And two out of the four links worked, so fifty-fifty, not bad. Approval of proposal from IDEA Engineering, G4.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This matter is back before the board, linked now to our bilingual communications plan, as well as provided you with a document from the CEO of IDEA Engineering in relationship to how we would kick off our communications plan with the branding work that he would do. I don't, I think he broke it down very clearly and succinctly in his letter to you. The evaluation component is pretty clear in the communicate, bilingual communications plan as to what we'll do, how we'll measure our effectiveness. And both Mr. Dixon and myself are here to answer any questions that board members, or attempt to answer any questions that board members may have.
Mr. Dixon has, this is now his second meeting he's been here, and he missed the first one because we went too fast. He's here now. Do you have, do you want to say anything?
I think that the, the letter answers it.
But if you have any questions beyond that, or I can kind of go over what I put in the letter.
Ms. Idelson?
I have a general question, maybe either you or Dr. Cash. So my understanding is this is the framework to interview and sort of set into motion what the branding would be, and then what would come next as far as the financial issue as to, to implement that? Do we know that, or is that up in the air?
Well, the bilingual communications plan clearly lays out what the potential costs would be for various components of it, including the production and mailing. And so that, those would be the steps that would move forward.
I think just an important part of that answer that also was in the letter, the whole idea of having, putting together this platform is it creates a unified voice for the school district to speak in. And it's not just whether we're working on it, it's for anybody to go to and check in on that. I tend to refer to it as the brand prism, because everything should shine through it. The best way to speak is in a unified voice, not in the voice of whoever just has been tasked to do something on that day. And so this is to create a document that anybody can go to, and literally there will be a lexicon of words in there. There will be viewpoints of how to put forward what this, what the unified school district stands for and the voice that it talks in. And it will put your communications on the same page every time they are made, whoever is making them and whatever they're about.
And are we, is Santa Barbara Unified unique to this, or does every school district do this for bilingual education and what their?
We've done a lot of work in, in education. We've done a ton of projects up at UC Santa Barbara, CSU Channel Islands. We do a lot of work down in Ventura. And frankly, it's not just in education, in various government agencies and various profit, for-profit, nonprofit organizations, all run into the same problems where the imagined truths about them aren't necessarily the actual truths. And a project like this is to straighten those things out. You know, that when I, when I lecture on branding fairly often, and when I'm actually asked to break it down to its most simple form, I say what a brand is, is what do people think about when they think about you? And that can be the unified school district, that can be Apple, that can be a widget, it can be an anti-smoking campaign. But what do people think? And it's, it's very often that what people imagine is not necessarily what reality is. And the idea of a project like this is firstly to bring everybody in, a huge amount of work that we, in fact, the first, we've done tons of work for Ventura, the first thing we did for them was Hispanic outreach. The first, we were in the middle of a huge project now for Santa Barbara County ADMHS. The first thing we did for them two years ago was Hispanic outreach. There's a huge amount of misinformation and miscommunication. And often it's driven just by people taking messages that frankly are written in Anglo, as I would say, and then just translating all the words into something else. Pure communication is speaking to people in a way that is relevant to the lives they lead. And it's not just the language, it's, it's the lives of whoever they are and whatever they do, and the way the various people groups are sliced up. And so it's creating messaging that works dependent on who is receiving them. I think, as I mentioned in my letter, it's not communicating when you say it. It's only becomes communicating when somebody reads it, listens to it, understands it. And that's what this project is about, is to create a platform for true communication. So people fully understand what the school district stands for, what its goals are, what it's doing, the work that you were doing, and feel that they're integrated into it, not just being exposed to it.
I guess I personally question, we're a public school, and who does not really understand what we do? I mean, I can understand branding from a private company standpoint because they're unique. But when I looked at this and I asked around me, people, how they perceive Santa Barbara Unified School District, it was obvious to them what a school does and how it does it. So I'm, I questioned the value as far as spending this kind of money on this.
Well, I guess, you know, as I, as I stood here, oh, after the meeting last time, I chatted with a couple of you, chatted to Mr. Herron, President Herron. And I said, when, when this place is packed, what's it usually for? Because people are coming to tell you how great you are, or because they have a problem. And when I spoke to the staff here, what do you usually hear? How awesome you are? Oh, awesome, you're not. And people can understand in the most basic term what a school is and what a school district does. But how they perceive it, we're in the midst of a big project for Sansom. One of Sansom's issues is people get focused on wait times, because that is a problem. And yet miss the fact of this huge, amazing, specialized, integrated health system that they are. And so the project that we're working on for them is to really make that, people understand what they are. Because then how they perceive the little issue that they're having in relation to what they're getting suddenly changes. And a huge amount of work that we do is in government and nonprofit. And the amount of time that gets saved by people changing their relationship to organizations and not having adversarial relationships is colossal, colossal. So it's, it's, it's just as important. And we do, IDEA Engineering does more work in governmental work than we do in for-profit.
Dr. Paz?
You know, I, you know, not to disagree, but just to, to say that I do agree that we have a problem with our communication. As you are correctly saying, we heard one speaker at least tonight articulate a point which, for a lot of Latino parents, they don't know what's happening. You know, yeah, we have a website in Spanish. Do people know what's on the website? No. I would argue that most of them don't know. And that we spend a lot of time trying our outreach to our parents, trying to get them information in a way that's, as you're saying, relevant, useful for their lives, the way they live their lives, the challenges they face on a day-to-day basis. So I see a lot of value in what the proposal brings, especially given that I spent a lot of time as a board member trying to explain all the different things we're doing, and that we have a lot of things happening in our respective school sites and as a district as a whole, and how to communicate that to so many different audiences, especially given that we're implementing so many things. We're in the midst of doing an ALCAP, we have LCFF, we have Common Core. We have a lot of things that we have to make sure that people understand in a very, it goes beyond just explaining the school site and saying, oh, yeah, the schools do this. What a basic level. Yeah, a lot of people understand that. But all these other pieces that are happening at the same time is really challenging. And I don't think we have much time to do that. And to try to find that wonderful little sweet spot that people can understand and get the type of information they are looking for, I think is really critical right now, given that the role of the schools, I think in my mind, has changed. In my mind, it's, it's much more, we demand more of our schools. We have parents tonight, five of them who decided to show up tonight to ask of us to play a greater role in serving them. So the only way I can do that is to make sure that they have information, and information is power to them. And we've spent countless meetings talking about facilities. We've spent a whole board workshop talking about special education. When most of those parents were talking about the lack of information from our schools to them as parents. And my, you know, one of my last statements to the audience was, information is power. And when parents don't have that, when they don't have information to make decisions that will impact their children, it is, it's, that's our responsibility. And, and if we don't do a good job of that, then they will come back, and you're absolutely right, they will say, we're not doing a good job. And they may not put on a happy face the next time. They may put on a really angry face. And it is our job to make sure that we're ahead of the curve in that regard. So I would say, I look at this proposal, I'm very, I'm very supportive of it, because I think it's a critical role that I think we need to continue at. And money spent in this prevents many parents from feeling frustrated. And for me, that's well worth the time and effort.
I would agree that communication is, has been, for my six years, a major issue. I noticed that I believe the speakers this evening, I think we have a translation in English of their responses.
You have them on the binder desk.
Oh, okay. Then hopefully you get those, because that, that will show you some current concerns. And I also, have you read the Special Education FICMAT report?
I have not yet, no.
Okay. Because in the communication plan, it's made mention that we should refer back to that, because many of the issues that were spelled out in that five years ago are still current. And that would be a good thing to look at for the district, not just special education. Because we talk about a lot of different entities within our system, and special education is one of them, that everything you just said applies to them just as well. And we need to reach out to every group in our school district, every, every child.
You know, I was, I was kind enough to be invited by the district to go through IEE two years ago, the program put on by Just Communities. And it was incredibly eye-opening for me. But I remember feeling heartbroken at the time. They had somebody, several parents come in to talk to us who, for whom, I mean, well, didn't speak English, period. And I even saw a slice of it tonight, which is, I didn't know. So somebody said, I didn't know that my child could get out of this, this track that they're on. Well, I mean, you guys aren't hiding this. It's not like you don't want people to know, but no. And some of it can just be simple. With just, this week, we presented to ADMHS, we got approval on the new front page for their website. And there is probably a fifth as much information on the new front page as there is on the old one. Because, and it's funny, it's educational establishments do this more than any. Everything's on the front page. And it turns it into a Gordian knot. It's, it's not a welcome sign. It's just a huge regurgitation of information, which makes it impossible to get through. We try to strip it away, so just an easy path exists to get the information that you want. So you don't have people showing up saying, I had no idea, I didn't know. If I had known this three years ago, I would have done something totally different. And if all that gets taken care of, your jobs get to be different kinds of jobs. You're doing less explaining and more doing, which I bet you prefer to do.
Yes. Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
I would like to make the motion to approve the proposal from IDEA Engineering.
Second it.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor, oh, motion passed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to wonderful and great things.
We will now go to the conference agenda. H1, Translation and Interpretation Services in the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a long time coming. I want to really congratulate Dr. Raul Ramirez, who has done an outstanding job in leading and facilitating a consensus-building process amongst our school leaders, our parents, and looking at how best to provide appropriate translation and interpretation services, both within our schools and at our district. And Dr. Ramirez is here tonight to walk the board through this and to answer as many questions as he's able to. And we're here to take direction from the board, if there is something else that you would like us to do in relationship to this. With that, Dr. Ramirez.
Hi. Good evening, Board President, Mr. Herron, board members, members of Cabinet, and of course, members of the community. As Dr. Cash indicated, I am here to present on the progress we have made in translation and interpretation services here in the district. And, and, and one of the things that I should, I should mention is that on, on the agenda, it does indicate translation and interpretation services, yet up here you see language access guidelines. So we reimagined the, the notion of translation and interpretation, and felt that a more appropriate way of viewing those types of services is to consider them under what we feel is, is a bit better way, a much better way, I should say, of capturing the spirit of, of language and those, what those services entail. And that is through language access. So I'd be more than glad to speak to that in just a minute. So just to provide you with a bit of background, the first point is, is very important, and that is that language access is essential to family and parent involvement and engagement. As we come into a, into a new way of thinking and considering the way in which parents play a part in our school and district life, we want to move increasingly away from involvement and really talk about ways of engaging parents in decision-making, in the clarity that was of the, of the things that we do from day to day. So in addition to that, we want to make sure that we begin to remove obstacles to, that provide, that hinder that full engagement and that full participation. And language happens to be one of those. So, so when we talk about language access, it really is a way of providing vital information to parents, community, students in fact, about the workings of the district, of the school at every level. In addition to that, it is firmly, this notion of language access is firmly aligned to our strategic plan and to our ALCAP, specifically aims two and three, student, family, and community engagement, as well as organizational transformation. And we could, we could definitely speak more to that, but it's just important to understand that this isn't something that is operating in space, but is really fully aligned to the direction in which the district is heading. Just to reiterate this point, there are state and federal laws that, that mandate essentially that translation services be available when, when your parent population, student population reaches 15% or more on the annual language census, which is something that we're, has been a longstanding practice, and even within the district. So, so there is a, there is a backdrop and a background to all of this that we're just hoping to, to build, build from. And finally, the attempt here is to begin to establish more, a more comprehensive approach to translation and interpretation, understanding that certain services need to be centralized and need to be really district-based. But simultaneously, that, that, that needs to exist within a, within a, an atmosphere that is very local and, and very driven by what traditionally has been a parent's or community member's first point of contact, which is schools. And so we, we recognize that there has to be a, a working relationship, a way of establishing a network of support that extends, that doesn't overextend or draw from a centralized approach, but at the same time is accessible and can reach and ripple out to, to the sites, classrooms, and every, and all those points at which it would be reasonable for a parent or, or community member to be able to, to access. And before moving on, I do want to credit a very important source. And these, these kinds of services are happening everywhere throughout our district. And they have been happening historically even. But what we're trying to do now is really, again, provide a comprehensive approach. But in, in doing my work and in doing the work, the work that I'm, that I'm really going to walk you through, I really have to credit Dos Pueblos High School as really a model for where we drew a lot of our, a lot of this, a lot of this information, and began to work it in, in a way that would allow us to bring it to scale across the district. And so, so they, they established over the years practices that really are promising for this type of work, and that really informed the, the direction in which we're, we're currently attempting to undertake. So with that, and you have, you have this, and then it, I'm not intending to go through every single point here. This is, I did want to make a point about this, and that the lists that you see before you are really representative and not, not necessarily exhaustive. In fact, they're not exhaustive. We, the more that we've engaged in this type of discussion, we realize the, the full impact of, of this notion of language access, which is why we really wanted to, to brand it as such, recognizing that translation, interpretation can operate in a very reductive way to try to oversimplify a, an approach that, that truly is, is very fluid and is very, very dynamic. So what you see here are, are an example of, of the kind of services that would be reasonable to expect from centralized, which is district, and, and those that are, that are, that would be really reserved for sites that perhaps, if not now in time, would be reasonable to undertake and be able to, to have as part of just the daily functioning of, of a school site. And what you see in certain instances is that And what you see in certain instances is that there may be some overlap, and there are specific reasons why, well, that may be the case. But this is an initial attempt to begin to bring clarity to this process. And, and in this particular slide, you see interpretation. And in the, in the next one, you'll see translation. And those are two uniquely different skillsets in, in some ways, and, and also ones that require a little bit more thinking through as, as we, as we kind of consider these, these things now and moving forward. What you'll see also at the bottom, under district, and, and just to, to bring everybody up to speed on this, in our, in our, in our district, we have currently three interpreters and translators that, that work full-time for, for us as a district. We've, we've kind of rebranded them as, as the Language Access Unit. But essentially what, what, we have Ana Chávez, José Saleta, and Sofia Rual Caba. And those people have been really instrumental to, to informing this process. They've seen this probably more times than, than they care to over the last, really, five months, just as, as a means of trying to bring together ideas and, and how to, how to begin to work something that, that can be very daunting and overwhelming and, and very far-reaching, and bring it into something that it really is actionable. So, for example, you'll see some of our projects that have, have been undertaken and, and are, and some of which are, are pending in terms of completion. High school course catalogs, our, our district website, syllabi, the LCAP itself as a document, and single plans, school accountability report cards, district board policies and admin regulations. So all of those are projects that have, have already been undertaken, but the degree to which they've been completed varies depending on, on, on each one. So it, and there is a separate document that I'll, I'll be able to walk you through with a little bit more precision, but one of our, of our overarching goals is to increase capacity. The, the way that we know that, that services are going to make their way to sites and to classrooms is ultimately by ensuring that we are constantly working with our staff to, to develop their, their capacity to be able to provide these services in the first place. So there is a big focus on professional development as part of our overall plan, and that is to develop all levels, all levels of staff and, and really to move forward in a very comprehensive way. So there's a couple of different levels that I wanted to, to share with you around just the interpretation alone, which, which oftentimes is, is the, is the most important initial, initial means of communication. And so on level one, we have interpreting for social justice, and that's done through a partnership with Just Communities. That is a, an introductory level training that, that really brings, brings to light the, the importance of, of interpretation, not just in terms of its functionality, but really the intent and what it can do for increasing access to information and, and really connecting members of a community or members of, of different groups to, to us as a district or institution. And so that's, that's, that's what we envision as being more or less of an introductory course to, to really lay out what the, the purpose is behind, behind interpretation as, as, as a skill and as an ability. Level two is actually one that we're currently undertaking and that we've, we, we just started this week, which is our Community Interpreter Training. And it's a 40-hour training, and it is facilitated by our Language Access Unit. So this, this, this week, they started on Monday, and we'll be having those over the next four weeks, well into March. And that is something that we hope will, will develop. It's something that started last year, and we're hoping that it continues to become a very important staple of what we do. Just to give you an idea of the cohort, that the, the, the people that are, they make up this cohort, we have front office personnel, we have instructional aides, we have, we have a number of, of just a cross-section, a good cross-section, of different representative functions and, and, and job descriptions throughout the district. And, and already, our session for the summer, the, what we consider the early summer, is already full, and we're, we're already well beyond our 20, because we want to keep that, that group, a very intimate group, because of just the hands-on work that, that takes place. So it's something that we're very excited that, that is continuing, and our hope is to just continue to provide the, the skill where there is that will. And it's, it's, it's a wonderful way that we feel we'll, we'll continue to, to, to provide those services at, at the site level again. And, and our level three is something that has come on recently, and that is interpretation for the purpose of explaining different functions and, and programs within special education and specifically IEPs. We understand that that requires a much more technical aspect of, of, of interpretation. As, as knowing that, we, we, that we work very closely with the Special Education Department to begin to address what some of those needs might entail. And that would be a 12-hour training module. So if you were to, if you were to see this, and we are requiring that, that individuals seeking to, to take part in this, they must have taken part in the Community Interpreter Training. So if you were to look at this as a comprehensive, in a comprehensive way, you would see that there would be in excess of 60 hours of professional growth opportunities just on interpretation alone. And that is a, that is something that we feel is, is going to begin to, to really address some of the concerns that exist and maybe some, where some of the gaps may lie.
One second.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Paz?
So, and just to, to clarify, so someone can start at, at level one and continue down all the way to level three, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so when, when you get to a part later on, or you don't have to answer this question right now, but later on, I kind of want to understand, so when you get to the table, when we're looking at that table in terms of when to use an interpreter, what service provider, sample services rendered, I would like, I, I'd be curious to know how some of these feed into that table.
Sure.
And, and another question I had is, people could stop at level one, they could stop at level two.
Sure.
Correct. Okay.
Yes. So, so at this point, we, we, we recognize that, at this point, we're trying, we're trying to take it from a very positive growth approach. We understand that there are a number of our, of our, the members of our staff that just in the day-to-day workings, their, their, just their day-to-day interactions feel that they, that they would benefit from more exposure, more, more growth. And, and we also feel that it has to be facilitated by individuals that have that capacity. And this is, this is all that, that, an attempt to ensure that the, the curriculum is, is aligned to not only their day-to-day needs, but also it is facilitated, again, by those people that have the experience, the expertise to be able to, to deliver it, because it, it isn't just a matter of going through the motions. And if you ever have an opportunity, we, we welcome you to, to, to come and visit, just so you can experience what, how, how practical and hands-on it is, but at the same time, how it, how it serves to, to really reinforce some of the, some of the, the positive interactions that we want to foster at the site level. So another, another component of increasing capacity is, is our student interpreters. So this is something that has, has gone on for several years. We're, we're definitely making that a focal point of our approach this year. This, this really came out of the work of the Back to School Night Committee, which I'll mention in just a minute. But with our student interpreters, very, very critical things emerge from this. And, and the first is that as a district, we, we recognize that it's, it's, it's an asset to, to have, to, to encourage and foster multiculturalism, but bilingualism in particular. And one of the, one of the, one of the key aspects of this as it relates to students is embracing their culture and the assets that, that they bring to school every day as a function of, of just their upbringing and, and their home lives. In addition to that, it's also a, a huge benefit to us as, as an organization, because it provides yet another layer and another opportunity for parents to, to be able to, for us to be able to outreach to our community. And, and, and one of the things that, when, when working with student interpreters, we're not, we're not in any way suggesting that we're abdicating our responsibilities. We have a very limited scope and responsibility for them. We recognize that they are, they are, they're children after all. And so, but it is a, a, a means by which we can begin to foster that, that, and, and appreciate the, the assets that they bring to, to, to our schools and to the district. And, and it's, it's another great way of, of signaling to our community that, that is in fact what we are doing. So our training module is, is going to be, again, facilitated by our Language Access Unit and our community liaisons. So that's a partnership that exists. We've been working very diligently over the last three months in particular, since, from November on, after a debrief in October. But it, it involves active recruitment and selection, and we have, while we have some selection criteria, we also see this as a great opportunity to encourage and connect with students that may otherwise exhibit signs of being of disconnectedness, if that's even a word. But, but we recognize that, that this is not an attempt for us to select just those, those students who've maybe traditionally been viewed as high-achieving, but as an opportunity to really delve even deeper and recruit students that, that just perhaps this can be a, a good inroad to establishing a feeling of, of community for themselves and, and for their extended family. So it entails six-hour training, and while it's more scaled down, we're trying to, to make that, make all those, all those minutes count. We're anticipating four hours here in the spring, and with another two in preparation for our Back to School Night, and for them to have a function as school ambassadors, as interpreters and, and liaisons within that, within that Back to School Night, those functions. So it, it is going to be overlapping here in the spring and the fall. So those are just a few examples of, of how we're attempting to build that capacity. And, you know, right before moving to, to this other document, I just wanted to, and it is referenced here, implementation of, of, of our Language Access Guidelines. And again, that's the other document that you have that we can certainly walk through. Another, another important aspect of this is creating, all of this is under the vein of, of starting systems and creating systems that work, that can inform, that can inform itself and ultimately yield a better result. But part of this is creating a centralized system to receive and respond to requests from sites and departments, as well as to track data over time. And, and part of what we've done with, with ETS is establish already a Zendesk, similar to the way that they receive tickets or work orders. We want to establish something very similar, just to not create more redundancy. It, it becomes a similar system. And what we're trying to do next is, is have its own webpage, to establish it as, as a unit separate and apart, and, and communicate the very, the very work that they do. Because I think in, in, in engaging in this work myself, I realized that there is, there is still a lot of confusion and miscommunication perhaps about, about these, these kind of services from a very practical standpoint, from the teacher in the classroom, from the principal at the site, all throughout departments here in the district. The other thing is, we also want to establish a professional development calendar. Again, this goes back to, to developing capacity at all levels. Really, our, our facilitators would be our Language Access Unit, but we're, there may be other, other folks that can, that can support within our district that can support the, these, these endeavors. And really, it, it's going to be ultimately open to all of the, all district staff, because we recognize that at every, at every point, there are exchanges happening with, with community, with parents, with students, that, where we feel that any person really would benefit from this type of, this type of growth. Finally, we, we also want to continue to receive feedback and input from committees and stakeholder groups. And so two that, that really come to mind are the Back to School Night Committee, which has been a committee that is, that was formed some time ago, and that I've had the opportunity to, to work with more closely since I've come on board. And also the Cultural Proficiency and Equity Committee, which will be tackling a number of different aspects of cultural proficiency and, and equity and opportunity. But one of those is, will be parent engagement. How do we engage our parents? And language access is pivotal to that, to that work.
Any questions at this point? Ms. Parker?
Well, and I, I know it ties in, and maybe you're going to pull up the, the accompanying document as well. Just, I, I appreciate this work, and I, and if you pull up the accompanying document, that the, when you're talking about professional development, I hope that there is some that just includes all of our staff as speakers of a source language, because so much of the interpretation is consecutive. And even though you have that nice, and I know that the interpreters are being trained on setting up the parameters and the protocols for a meeting that's going to be interpreted, so many times when I see it in action, I see that a teacher just gets excited and involved with what they're trying to convey, completely forget that the interpreters there next to them. And if it's, professional interpreters are really good at stopping a conversation. But students in particular, because there's just this ingrained power difference and etiquette that so many times I just, you know, I feel like teachers in particular just need regular reminders that it's not just about, you know, that, that quick, you know, 10 seconds at the beginning of a meeting, but this is what it means to be, you know, a good source language speaker in a meeting. And can we get some professional development for our English-only speakers so that they become good at that and figuring out that they need to stop and remember that they need to stop, because they'll forget.
Yeah. What you identified there is, are just some of the nuances that come along with this, with this kind of work. So in fairness, this, this document could be 300 pages if we wanted to, to, to really move forward with, with identifying and really, really addressing all of the nuances that exist, as you, as you've indicated. The, the trainings are really assuming that, 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 that person brings a level of bilingualism, that over time we will, we will begin to, to vet more and more. But the work of working with an interpreter is also very important, because there has to be some recognition of, of all of the, the elements that you indicated. And they're, they're more than just protocols, although we, we could try to work them that way. And in fact, Barbara Kiani has, has developed or helped us put out some, some posters that begin that work, that we could, you know, as we move forward, come, come back and, and really show, so, show you so that you can see that, that this is, has been something that has, it's not new. I don't want to pretend that any of this is, is new. What, what our attempt at this point is to create a comprehensive approach to it and to really understand that, that it is multifaceted and that it is as much about the person that is receiving the information as the person delivering it, as the person who is the conduit for that information. So it, it operates on a number of different levels. But we wanted to have something that, an approach to our professional growth that was very practical, that would, that we could immediately start to see and, and build momentum as we, as we engage more fully in, in interpretation, translation, and ultimately, language access. So the, the first page of this, just to, to give you some, some, just some background on this, it's an attempt to establish a common language and, and an attempt to establish continuity. And so when we talk about interpretation, translation, some of us use those terms interchangeably, but in fact, they are two different, very distinct functions. Consecutive interpretation versus simultaneous, and, and you, you alluded to that just a second ago. But it provides just some key terms and also provides just an overview of what that language access entails in, in a way that becomes more operational. So, so that's the first page. Where, where we start to talk a little bit more in terms of the specifics is, and again, this is just another attempt to look at how do you discern what types of services can be or should be, if not now, in time? Those that we can expect sites to be able to undertake versus those that inevitably we're going to have to rely on our, our own centralized and, and Language Access Unit. So, so it, it's, it's a contrast, and again, this, this, this list- So, it's a contrast, and again, this list here is just, as it indicates at the top, sample services. It's not an exhaustive list by any means, but it is a way of beginning to illustrate the difference between the two. And just to speak in more practical terms, right now, we just don't have, I feel, that clarity, so that a teacher in the classroom or a principal at a site can fully understand this is something that, if this request came from 18, 20 sites, what would that do? And what does that do to the turnaround? And what does it do to the way in which we can start to approach those bigger projects? That there is no way that we're going to count on any person from a school site to, there wouldn't be even reasonable to expect somebody from the school site to be able to undertake, that are, but are vital to communicating information that is critical to our parents and to our community. So, that is really the contrast there, and certainly, all of this will develop increasingly over time as more and more following understanding increases. And then, the next slide really talks about the function of professional interpreters and translators. To give you an example, part of the way in which we were able to turn around and have been able to turn around are single plans, and I'm very proud to say that we've almost completed all of them. We should be completing them here in the next week or two. And I'll also confess that we missed our own internal deadline, which we'll do better next year. We had a deadline of January 31st to be able to complete all of our plans, and we didn't quite get there this time around, but we feel that when we contrast it to last year, it's a huge step forward. But to come back to this, one of the ways in which we were able to manage that is by relying on outside interpreters, in this case, translators, to be able to provide that service. And so, it is going to require that we think about these things more broadly. And another thing that I haven't mentioned, but I'll mention it now, although 97% on this past year, 13, 14, of our parents or students indicated that their primary language was Spanish, that still leaves a 3% of students that encompass 20, over 20 other languages. And so, although we are talking about perhaps a larger group, we don't want to forget that there are other families and students that also require this service that we simply will not be able to provide internally. So, relying on community organizations and independent interpreters and translators, we just need to find a way to make that very strategic, and a way to know what role they may play over time. And then, finally, student interpreters, and as you see, it's very limited, very limited in what we would ask them to undertake. And this will be required just vigilance and follow-through from us at all levels to understand that it's really unreasonable to expect that students will take on more than is possible at their age and given their skill level. So, the last bit of this is really, begins to talk more of the logistics, more of those protocols. And one of them is, that will be messaging out here pretty soon more fully, are those procedures to request centralized services. So, what are those steps that need to be undertaken in order to get a document translated or get interpretation services at my site? And because we anticipate, and we've already seen an increase in the request, an increase in these kind of services, we see that also as a signal that every single school site is really committed to outreach and committed to ensuring that this is something that they anticipate as part of, as part of just their planning for any event or any function. And so, what you see there are just more logistical means of ensuring that there is follow-through, and it's the beginning stages of establishing clarity around those more operational aspects of this kind of service, or these kinds of services.
I would hope the board would recognize that while our, I don't believe our language needs have changed. I think they've been relatively constant for many, many years. Under the leadership of Dr. Ramirez, significant capacity is being built and will be built in order to provide access for parents who have not had access. And again, I want to acknowledge the work he's done, and I know he doesn't do it alone, but his leadership has been outstanding in this area. So, thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Questions?
Just also wanted to say thanks. That was a lot of work, I know. Look at all those pieces in there, and I know that it's still sort of in progress in terms of, you know, rolling it out, implementing, doing all those pieces, but thank you so much for all that work.
Well, thank you, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention just the number of people that, whose work really went into this, staff over at Dos Pueblos High School, our Language Access Unit, Marina Gamboa, who's critical to this work, our back-to-school night committee, just a number of people that have really done this work, I mean, done it on a day-to-day and have brought it to the forefront. So, I really wanted to acknowledge that this is by no means my work. It's really their work.
Thank you very much. It's something much needed, has been for a long time, so we're really well along.
Thank you.
Discussion of proposed increase in civic center fees.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have Ms. Jete here to make this presentation.
Thank you. I don't have anything. In 2012, Governor Brown signed a Senate bill, SB 1404, which amended the existing Civic Center Act to expand the definition of direct cost that school districts were able to charge for the use of the school facilities or grounds. Districts have long been able to charge for operational direct costs such as custodian utilities, and SB 1404 added the capital direct cost. This allows school districts to recover the costs of maintenance, repair, restoration, refurbishing related to the depreciation of school facilities and grounds accelerated by non-school users. To determine the proposed fees, the calculations were completed by using the following facilities: athletic fields, stadiums, theaters, auditoriums, multipurpose rooms, outdoor basketball, tennis courts, parking lots, kitchens, cafeterias, gyms, and pools. Currently, the Santa Barbara Unified School District does not lease their libraries. However, the calculation was done, and in the event, the board chose to lease the school libraries, or rent the school libraries. So, I've attached the current use of school facilities, BP 1330, and I'm not going to go through all of the strikeouts, and also, the AR is attached. But I want to bring to your attention the actual fee facility spreadsheet that is in your packet. So, you may want to put that one up. It's the spreadsheet. So, currently, the first column is the current fees that we charge for our school-use facilities. And then, I did the direct cost and capital cost that we're allowed to do in the new way of calculating this. So, the direct fee is for use that our community would use that is related to our school sites. And then, the for-profit organizations that we anticipate for, well, they would like to say that we're the non-Santa Barbara area. So, we do have people who come in and rent our facilities that are not from the Santa Barbara area. For example, we have a lot of swim meets that are like a national swim meet, but they're, so they're not just Santa Barbara customers, but they're also for for-profit organizations. So, it's kind of, it's holding two buckets right there. So, they're anticipating two people, two types of community members. So, the proposed direct fee, basically, we went, I went through a long calculation using the CDE Excel spreadsheet that tells you how to take in consideration the use, the possible use, the amount of hours that we can possibly use it for the whole year, and then, how much is rented out. So, we took the proportionality of what our community uses opposed to what we use, and then, the calculation figures the dollar amount. So, at the top, it's all half-day, full days, the way we used to do it, basically, and then, later on, it's half, it's hourly's, because people just rent them out by the hours. So, most of them did not go up that much, however, there are some that went up quite a bit. So, I'm here to take any questions that you have about these fees.
You mentioned something about the policies and changes, line-outs, et cetera?
Yeah, and the...
I didn't see any.
Did you get BP 1330?
Yeah, but I didn't, I don't see any changes. Are we looking at the original or something with changes, 1330? AR and BP, we don't have any markouts or changes. At least, I don't have any.
So, I do.
Oh.
So, we must have given you the original BP without the CSBA.
A $29 application. It's just the old stuff.
It's the old stuff.
So, maybe you could get up on the website what you intended and get us a copy of it.
I will, and I apologize for that. I thought that was on there.
So, you said, which ones went up? I can't see from here.
So, if we look in the percentage column...
Which one up the most?
Well, there was, let's look at the athletic fields. The athletic fields went up 214% because, on the average, we were charging $14. That's adult use, elementary and secondary. I averaged them to give, because the way we used to do it is, we used to segregate it out as elementary auditoriums and elementary fields and things like that, where that was a massive calculation in how big the fields are. So, what I did is, I grouped them, so they're basically in elementary and secondary. So, with the athletic fields, when I put in all the costs of replacing the field or maintaining the field during the summer, when we close all the fields down and we reseed them and we water them and we get them ready for the school year, the cost went up to $43 an hour. And so, from an average of 14 an hour to 43 was 214%.
An organization like Special Olympics wants to use one of our fields, where would they fall on this?
They would probably fall under the direct fee, and Dr. Cash has the right to waive the application fee or the fees altogether.
Ms. Parker?
Dr. Paz first, I'll go second. I'm just curious, why is there such a discrepancy between the half-day parking lot and the full-day parking lot? I mean, they're using it for four hours versus eight hours, and 64 versus 511. I mean, is that just because of the calculations? It just seems like, it's like, when you look at the differences, and even the current 12 to 69, it's like, wow. I mean, four hours of use versus eight hours.
Yeah, that doesn't look right, does it?
No, and I'm just thinking, regardless, let's just play devil's advocate for a minute.
It's not correct.
No.
No.
Because if you were to use the parking lot for four hours and you have the same amount of cars, the wear would be the same, right?
No, and that's wrong.
Okay.
That's my formula, because, I mean, now that I look at it, you know, when you look at this for so long, this took me a long time to do with all of the, finding out the replacement value and all of that. I mean, you can see, just by the percentage, it goes up, because what I did is, on the full-day, half-day, that should be the same percentage going up, correct?
Yeah.
So, that will be corrected, and I apologize for that.
The same thing perhaps happened with the basketball courts?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm wondering if I'm one cell over, wrong.
Yeah.
How many times did I look at that?
Ms. Parker?
I appreciate all this work, Ms. Jete.
Thanks.
And I get where the state is going from, and I get where facilities is coming from. My concern is, you know, it's a part of our strategic plan that our school spaces be here for our community to use, and we want to encourage community use. And some of these increases are, I really feel like discouraging community use, and to hit people with this would make some groups really have to rethink whether or not they could use our facilities. And so, I have a lot of concerns about raising the fees this amount. And I don't know if there's some way not to do it, or to do it in a way that is not as, you know, is not a sledgehammer.
Right. My intent here was to show you what we could charge, the maximum amount, basically. And so, if the board decides not to even raise the fees, or raise them slightly, or do a flat percentage against all fees, they could, you could do whatever you want, as long as they don't exceed what the state allows.
Thank you. That makes me feel much better.
Yeah, and I should have started out with that.
Yeah, because I personally would approve, you know, just some, increasing things by some minor, small percentage, just to make sure that we are not falling behind in the costs, rather than going this large amount, so.
How would you suggest we proceed from here?
Well, I mean, I would see what Ms. Jete and Business Services had to say in terms of, you know, cost adjustments, but making sure that we are not going, essentially having less income because the costs have gone up. But I, you know, I could see something going up 5% or 10%, but 200%, you know, even something like 40% or 50% seems like it would end up being a barrier. So, that's where I'm thinking.
Do you want them to come back with some, board, do you want them to come back with some proposed number that, or a range of numbers, or?
Can I move?
Yes, Dr. Paz.
You know, I see some of these is definitely looking at, like, lots of wear and tear. Athletic fields obviously comes to mind. I mean, in taking that perspective, swimming pool, I almost see like, what are we damaging in the water?
Well, actually, the swimming pools are very costly, because if you don't cover them, the electricity to keep the pool heated, and the chemicals, that those, and the maintenance around the pool, it's not just the pool. But you're right, I mean, like, the outdoor tennis courts and the outdoor basketball courts and parking lots, they don't need as much wear and tear. But as I said, you know, if you would like me to come back with what they used to be, what the maximum can be, and then do some percentages in between?
Well, I mean, that would be helpful, but what I'm alluding to is that, yes, I think some of the things that get the most wear are also probably at the top of the list of, not only because they are more susceptible to wear, but because they are asked to be used more, like athletic fields.
Right. Our junior high athletic fields are used quite a bit.
And so, I think that's one of the things that we should consider in terms of looking at this, like, how do we, you know, balance Ms. Parker's concern about making sure that our school sites are seen as centers of our community, which we've put in our strategic plan, we're looking at that, all those pieces, but at the same time, balancing it out with the fact that some of our athletic fields do take a beating. There are times of the year where I know that there's a lot of organizations asking and requesting for that, balancing out with our board policy in terms of use. It's a tough one, and I think, you know, all I'm saying is that perhaps that's one area where we may want to look at it slightly bit different, as opposed to some of the other ones where I don't see as much wear and tear. There isn't, you know, there aren't people knocking down the door, asking to be used in the parking lots all the time, in some cases, not all. But in other cases, the athletic fields, I know for a fact, we've had a lot of discussion about athletic fields, the use of it, and in some cases, we're looking at, how does that impact even, you know, joint use agreements? And so, that, I would beg to ask staff and you all to kind of consider that, and maybe come up with some ideas or thoughts, or anything that could come back to the board so that we can consider that, and maybe look at it slightly bit differently. board so that we can consider that and maybe look at it slightly bit differently. But again, trying to balance it out with what we're trying to achieve long-term.
Well, these, these rates that I have put up here are in a calculation of what, what is behind that calculation. It's staffing, it's, um, you know, the life of a field, the life of a pool, um, the cost of a pool on an annual basis. So those actual costs are in there. So those would be your high. Those could be, that has to be your high, right there. So we can come back with, we start off with the current ones, which are lower, and go to the high, and then we can put different percentages in between. And if you want to apply a ten percent increase to an athletic field where you only want a percent, a two percent onto the parking fee, you know, things like that.
I guess my personal thought is that we, as a board, should look to staff for recommendations. You've heard the comments.
Okay.
And I would think the staff would come back with a recommendation. I don't think we should sit up here, is it two percent, three percent, ten percent, twenty percent? I mean, I don't know that that's our role, so I would, I personally would like to have a recommendation from staff after hearing all this with the overriding concept that we want the community to use our facilities. What would be reasonable, um, fees that would pay our expenses?
I, I wrote myself a note, Mr. President, that it would be good for Ms. Jete and Dr. Dradi to meet with all the principals and discuss each of the items listed and the amount of use and wear and tear.
Yeah, and then come back with your best recommendations.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lot, lot of work. Uh, Human Resource Strategic Plan, H three.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, Dr. Christensen is bringing forward the, a review of the Human Resources Department's strategic plan. And you've all had a chance to see it. And I'm sure, I know we'll make some pres, some part presentation and then answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members and Dr. Cash. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to talk about human resources and our strategic plan. Human resources, as you probably are well aware, is a multifaceted, extraordinarily complex and interesting field. And it also requires balancing of a lot of different interests and needs. The interests of the administration, the, the interests of our extraordinary staff, as well as student interests. Although I'm not going to highlight those tonight, additional areas of responsibility that are, that also fit all of those criteria include employee discipline, as well as administration of the entire contracts that we work with, and also bargaining. So tonight, out of the thirty-one slides, I'm going to go through them quickly and just highlight some things that I think that will be of particular interest to you. And then at the end, take any questions that you might have. Here we go. So of our nine current employees, five speak Spanish and three are fully bilingual. And within the last week, we hired another bilingual and bicultural Latina to join our department in the, whoop, in the spot on the bottom, um, Senior Office Assistant. Of our nine employees, six of them have a bachelor's degree or higher. And Mr. Brian Tanguy, I'm proud to tell you, just received his professional HR certification from the internationally recognized Society for Human Resource Management and the Human Resources Certification Institute, which required an enormous amount of work on his part and took a, a complex examination. And he is, that is our gold standard, the Society for Human Resource Management. So I venture to guess he's the first one in our district who has earned that distinction, and I'm very proud of him. Our mission is to guarantee, guarantee the educational success of all students, which is something we talked to you about when, shortly after I arrived on the scene. You've already had the opportunity to read some of these things, so I'm just going to go quickly through and highlight those that I think are really, um, really significant. So, one of the things that the board asked us to do was to work closely with the Santa Barbara City College Professional Development Center. And we now have had two iterations of our All-Day Professional Learning Day at San Marcos High School, which had never occurred before. And we continue to expand that. And City College has offered customer service, workplace communication, diversity, and making teams work offerings in August. We also had professors from Antioch, Marion Caston, offered a class on clinical supervision and evaluation to our administrators and also UCSB professors presented. And we also embedded a leadership strand into the Professional Learning Day, offering such things as Achievement and Opportunity in America based on Katie Haycock's work. Some of the other things we've done with our Institutes of Higher Education, as I serve on the Antioch Board, and in the spring of two thousand and fourteen, we met with the UCSB Teacher Education Program professors. And we taught, and they asked us, what are your needs? And what we talked about were those areas that Dr. Cash says are, and we believe are our highest priorities, including cultural proficiency, creating a technology-rich environment, and implementation of the Common Core standards. In addition, we also provided a, I provided a, a two-hour-plus training to the UCSB TEP coordinators, those people that work with our student teachers on professional learning communities, because that's a high priority in our district as well. And we also meet with our students and from our local universities and spend about two hours, two and a half hours with them, talking about the interview process and what to expect and just encouraging them to apply for jobs in our district. And we'll talk a little bit later about the minority recruiting and the, the teacher match. I know that's of some interest to some of you. Ongoing, um, things include that I sit on more than ninety-eight percent of the hiring panels. And we've done a number of Saturday interviews. That turns out to be very convenient for our applicants. And our principals like it too, because then they, they can really spend the time that they need to talk to people and determine whether or not they're a good fit for us. We started recruiting much earlier. We hired, um, we hired a math teacher this, just this February for next year. And, um, my philosophy on that is changing a little bit, particularly in these hard-to-fill areas, where instead of waiting for a large pool of candidates, if we have strong candidates, we're going to, we're going to bring them in and start locking them in for next year because statewide, math is a difficult area to fill. And tomorrow, we are going to be interviewing for special ed. So we want to get out there and get those, the people early. That was a criticism of our district is that we didn't, we didn't start till late. We've also expanded the scope of our advertising, not only in some, uh, local newspapers, but we are, we're attending Cabe, um, which is a, designed to attract our bilingual, bicultural educators. We went to USC, uh, recruiting fair, we're going to Cal Lutheran. We've done extensive outreach, um, to universities across the state, everywhere from Cal State Long Beach to Cal State Channel Islands to Cal State Northridge. We're doing a lot in this area. And another thing that we, we've done more of in the last year than we ever have is to really take a look at our out-of-state candidates. Because many times, they might have a tie to Santa Barbara, but you really have to dig to find that, and they're already working on their credentials. So we are getting more people, um, hired in our district who are from out-of-state. So we, we see that as improving. So you, in your packet, you've seen the trend line, our certificated hires, the number of certificated minorities and the percentage has gone up. And that's because we have paid close attention to that and have really placed an emphasis on hiring, um, more of our bilingual, bicultural, um, candidates. And after meeting with students, they certainly appreciate that and want more of it.
Do I interpret this correctly, that the percentage of, that are certified minorities gone up, but as a percentage of the total hired, it hasn't gone up as much?
Well, each year, it's gone up significantly. Um, the, the, the red is the number and the green is the percentage.
But that's why I say the number of hires has gone up, but the percentage that are minority hasn't gone up as much?
Not as much, that's correct.
Green crossed.
Yep, that's right. That's their percentage, but, and the numbers are a little bit different.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're still hiring more that aren't?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we will, we want to continue that.
Um, and just, can I ask on the certificated hires page? Certified hires, so it looks like it's a little bit over a hundred and thirteen, fourteen, and a little over a hundred and twenty and fourteen, fifteen. Is this, um, teachers and administrators or just teachers? Who are you talking about?
This is just teachers. I teased out the administrators the last time, but in the interest of brevity.
This one is just teachers?
This is just your teachers, yeah.
Thank you.
Classified, also the trend is going up, but we've done better in that area than we had in the certificated. And, and, you know, we can speculate on the reasons for that, but, um, so we remain strong in that area as well. Uh, something new that I just started in, um, February was to conduct personal interviews with sub-teacher candidates. We never interviewed them. Just anybody that signed up got to be a sub. So they come in now and I meet them and I have structured interview questions for them. They're not long interviews. But it's important to see who we hire because substitute teaching is important too. So we think that's a good step forward. I've worked hard on updating some job descriptions and, and here's why that's so important. Not only is it important to identify the essential job functions, but also the physical demands of the, um, of the job itself, as well as working conditions. And those become very important when we need to conduct interactive processes with our employees, to see if they can perform the essential functions of their job and then meet the physical demands of the position itself. So the, again, that's just something we've, we've worked on. And there are differences between what an elementary teacher is expected to do physically, like bending and stooping and crawling, versus a secondary teacher. I've talked about this last time, that we have expanded our online application requirements. We have a lot more information available to us now than ever. And I've experienced EdJoin as, as well as Teacher Match, and there's just a lot more information available than ever before. I apologize for this, this slide being so busy. What I wanted to reiterate is that an EPI score of fifty indicates that students will achieve one year of academic growth, can be expected to achieve one year of academic growth if a person gets an EPI score of fifty. So anything above that, you could expect, based on this, this validated instrument, that those students will gain one year of academic growth. Just interviewing somebody does not tell us how much they really know about teaching strategies. And this tool helps us determine, and I'll show you more later, what they do know about teaching strategies. We want our process to be rigorous but not impossible. General administrators have responded positively to Teacher Match. They would like to know more about, is there a direct cause and effect between who we hired and how they're doing? Well, we're a research district and I don't have the capacity to do that or to draw those kind of conclusions because I'm not that kind of a researcher. But that's the whole point of being a research district, is as they continue to improve this teacher match, the, um, and align the questions with best practices and student results, we expect to get better candidates. And we'll talk about retention rate shortly. So, um, you asked about our contract, and it's a rollover contract with sixty days' advance notice. We were still hiring in October. And I have to say that we, we have hired since the beginning of the school year twenty-two more teachers for various and sundry reasons. So we, we have just continued as people have left their jobs for various reasons, resigned or, whatever those reasons are, we have continued. So I view this, in my professional background, as being a personnel person since nineteen-seventy-five is a huge step forward in, in our hiring process. Because now it's not just an interview, but it's a number of things, including grade point average. Teaching skills and cognitive ability are the two biggest predictors of student achievement. We also think attitude is important, because if our teachers believe that all students can learn, we think it's important to leverage that. The EPI scores, um, you, you can read that. It just shows what the, the average would be in that fifty range where you want at least one year of academic growth for your students, for the people that you hire. Anything less than that, we don't want that. So that's a, that's a place to start. So these are the three cogni, these are the three domains and their relevance, which I've just described. Here are the number of questions on the EPI. You can see the, the largest emphasis is on teaching skills. There are eight questions on cognitive ability. All the administrators took the, the EPI and the twenty-five on the attitude, no. I know this slide is going to be of some interest to you. There are over four hundred people that completed the E, the EPI, and you can see that five hundred and six did not.
Ms. Erin, can I just, I have to go back to one of the previous, you talked in a, on one of the previous slides about how all of our district administrators have taken the EPI.
Yes, they have.
Um, are there any that would not have gotten a, an interview with us? I'm going to take that as a yes. Okay.
Well, I don't remember all of their scores, um, but they haven't been teaching in many cases. And the greatest percentage is about teaching skills and strategies. I spent seven years in Green Bay getting really aware of the most current teaching strategies and skills. So if they haven't been in the classroom, that, that may not be as high as scores. So I wouldn't say wouldn't necessarily hire them, but they may not be as current.
Okay, thank you.
We think if that's of interest, we can sort of give you the data.
I'm just curious to see how it played out compared to teachers.
Uh, I will show you. I've got, in fact, I think you'll see it here, uh, in a slide or two. So I just wanted to mention that when we have had, um, positions that we, we didn't have enough candidates for and they may not have completed their, their EPI, we, we can email them, we pick up the phone, we call them and say, look, we really want you to complete the EPI. I've got everything else, I've reviewed your resume, I've reviewed, you know, all the documents that you submitted. Complete the EPI so we can get you on the, on the interview. So we go after people if we feel like our candidate pool isn't deep enough. So I just wanted to let you know that. Some of our administrators feel that it should be a rigorous process to work for our school district, because we're a great school district.
Can I also ask on that slide?
Sure.
When it says incomplete, um, do you have any data on how much, how much of the time is that incomplete, just the teacher match piece? I mean, I assume that there are other reasons that they may not complete.
Right, they may not have attached a cover letter, they may not have attached their transcript, which we require.
Right.
Um, or it may not have been the EPI. So it could be any one of a number of reasons.
So you don't have any data on?
I haven't teased that, that part out.
Thank you.
But I can tell you that enormous amount of work went into establishing workflow procedures, um, which we worked through with Teacher Match from, from hire to, you know, whether or not they declined or offer and a lot of, there's a lot of complexity to setting up the system. And, um, all of that has been accomplished now, and I'm pleased that we can track candidates throughout the process.
There's a question that the five hundred and six that were incomplete might have been for technical reasons. Was the system down for a while at one point and did those applications just not get processed finally, or?
The, the system has not been down, but what has happened in some cases is that the applicants may, are not reading the instructions that say, you need to be in a quiet place to do this exam, and it's a timed exam. And not, they didn't all, you know, do that or submit it on time. And in individual cases, when they felt that they didn't understand or they had a technical issue, we got on the phone with Teacher Match, we reset it for them so they could retake it again. So we try to work with people if they do run into problems, but sometimes it's self-inflicted.
What's the difference between declined and rejected?
Um, rejected would be that we did not interview them.
Okay. And declined?
And declined is that they accepted a job in another district.
Okay.
I mean, we have found that people have accepted jobs with us and then declined them because they couldn't find a place to live. And that's happened more than I care to, to report, unfortunately. So that's another reason we want to recruit early. So here are the, um.
I'm sorry, are these applications both certificated and classified?
No, classified just go on the EdJoin system. They don't take the EPI.
They don't take, okay.
Right, because they're not, they're not teaching. Great question. So here is our, um, you can see the administrator and grand total, the green dot, EPI score, um, is, if I can figure out how to work this thing here. There it is, right there. Okay, these, these are, these are the teacher scores, EPI by job hired. These are the administrator scores, and there's the teachers. I'm sorry, this is just, the teachers are just slightly, slightly above the EPI scores for the administrators.
No, actually, that's the non-hired. The other one is, the blue dots. So on that side of.
I'm sorry, right, right here.
Yeah, that's the teacher one. The blue, the small blue. The small blue dot underneath the first one, that's the administrator.
I'm sorry, you're right. Forgive me for confusing you. Thank you, Dr. Paz.
I had a question on that one too. So my hope, my pad went dead, but. So when I look at that score right there, or that particular chart, I'm curious. So I'm reading, if I'm reading this right, we have hired on that orange dot, which represents an EPI score of 53.55. Not hired represents an EPI score of 53.56. So I know that we were talking about earlier on that some people declined, some people just don't accept. So there's a, right now, if I was to look at that, we had a higher EPI score for the people that we didn't hire than the people that we hired.
Slightly.
Yeah, by one.
Very slight.
By one, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then on that other side, as you were alluding to before, the teacher ones were 53.55, just like the other side of that slide, and the administrators were 51.5.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I just, you know, graphs, they can be difficult. With the previous one talks about applications represent jobs applied to, and so an individual applicant can represent multiple applications. So when we see these, you know, large numbers, in fact, it could be the same person applying for 10 different elementary jobs that come open over the course of a year. Is that what you're kind of getting at or?
It wouldn't be that many because we didn't fly, I mean, we got our most applicants for elementary positions. But we didn't fly elementary positions that often. So if we had four positions open, that might have been one recruitment. And that same person might have applied for another, if they, for another elementary recruitment. They still would be in the list if we opened up another one. But there weren't that, there weren't that many.
Uh huh. So then the next question I have is on this page where it says 75 teachers hired. Were there, did you not, so everybody's included in this pool, including the 392. So I mean, when I look at that and see that the 392 that are pending, and I assume that if I add up these three numbers, I'm going to get to something close to 489, yes?
The completed?
Yeah, because this is higher than that. So this is pending, I don't know what the pending number includes. But anyway, you know, the long and short of it is, are there very many people that score less than 50?
There are some.
There are some.
There are some. And this is where we separate out and we take, the first number that I look at is attitudinal because that's do you believe all students can learn? There are surprising number in the cogni, well, let me go to the next one here and get to the domains. Here are the three domains, the attitudinal, the cognitive and the teaching skills. And you can see where our, where our hired candidates scored, a little bit below the 50 on the attitudinal and then well above the 50 on the other two. So these are strong candidates.
What does pending 392 mean? Do we have 392 people out there that we might consider hiring?
Yes, 392 that were in old pools that may roll over when we reopen a new position.
You say that your most important factor is attitudinal, but yet it's the lowest of the three.
It's slightly lower than 50, but that's the first thing that I look at, but it's only one thing because we also take a look at grade point average. We take a look at all of those scores. There are many things that go into determining whether or not we're going to interview someone. We take a look at the open ended questions that they answer on their application. We take a look at their resume. We take a look at, I mean, there are many things that we look at. That's just kind of a starting point for us. So if everything adds up and we have a very competitive pool and we look at can they speak Spanish fluently? Is there fluency in that area? So it's not just one thing. It's not a, it's a complicated process. And if you want it to be a complicated process, you wouldn't want us just to look at one thing.
No.
So here, there are the three domains and you can see we're slightly below the 50 on the attitudinal, but above on the cognitive and the teaching skills. And these are the teaching skills competencies where you can see where our candidates were above that, above that 50 as well in the teaching competencies. Here are our administrator scores. So you can see that they have done, they're high in these competencies and in the domains, but the attitudinal is, you know, is not as high. This is an important slide because of the retention rate, which is, when we talked about Teacher Match a year ago, estimated that the cost to hire new employees, about $7,500, that was conservative. And the Teacher Match costs us around $30,000 a year. So we have retained, we have a 90% retention rate this year compared to that 78% retention rate last year.
Can I ask, what do you mean by retention?
Of the people that we hired last year, there are 78% of those we hired are coming back.
Are coming back because they've decided to come back?
Because we have decided.
Or because we decided? I mean, have you, is this the entire pool? Because there are going to be a lot of teachers that decide not to come back just because they've got another job, they moved, whatever. Are they included in this or not?
No, they're not. These are the people that we have decided to bring back for a second year.
So they may still decide to leave, but that's their own. So this is about our deciding to bring people back?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the 90% a projection for people coming back for the next school year? It says 15, 16?
Yes, we have decided not to bring back a certain number of people and that's the red. Because those decisions have just been made.
Okay, that's our decision.
That's our decision.
That's not saying that 90% are coming back.
Well, we hope that they will.
We hope they do, but okay.
We hope they will. We've decided that they're going to stay if they want to stay.
So that's, that answers the question, how do we know?
But we always do lose people. We always have vacancies. People leave the area or they, you know, they decide to do other things.
And can I also ask, because one, ask, one of the previous slides seemed to show that more, there were more than 100 in 1314 for certificated staff that were hired, but this is 73.
Right. And, you know, again, this data was cut off as October 1st.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just had a question. On the evaluation that they fill out, is that personalized to our district? The tests that you give them?
The EPI?
Yeah.
Is it personalized to?
Right.
No, it's, no, it's not.
It's a standard.
It's a standard.
So when you look at attitudinal questions, are those all pretty much standard?
They're, yes.
Okay.
Yes, they are. I mean, they have more than one version of that particular test, but it's basically, it gets at the same thing. They have different questions maybe for different versions of the test, but it's, it depends on, you know, which version of the test you take when you sign up for it.
So like your example of a question being, you know, do you feel all children can learn? That's a standard question. It's not based on our district or?
No, it's not based on our district.
Okay.
And I can tell you that there are several states that are looking at adopting Teacher Match statewide. I've gotten some calls from Long Island, from North Carolina, some of the other districts that are using Teacher Match, and the larger ones are in the report. So the research base is so strong and I think that's why it's really taking off. Because now we have more than just an interview, because there can be that halo effect or in an interview. We have more data to work with.
Thank you.
And it's not everything, but it's just another piece.
What is the basic process when you determine that we're not going to bring somebody back? What is that process?
You mean after we've hired them?
Yeah, they teach their first year. What's the process to determine whether they're going to be retained or not retained for the following year?
That is a principal decision and the principals have to let us know in time to meet the statutory deadline of March 15th.
Thank you.
And I think to end on a high note, we had our first Star Awards Employee Recognition last year, was fully funded by outside donors. We're getting ready to gear up for it again on May 7th. Recognizes classified and certificated staff and we've got our nominations in for every single school except for one, so we're really happy about that. And this year ICANN is involved in providing the artwork for the donors and they'll also be providing musical presentation during our Star Awards night scheduled for May 7th. What are your questions?
Dr. Paz.
So one of the things, I was sitting here pondering and wondering if I should ask, but I'm going to ask it anyways. And I'm not trying to offend any of the administrators who are here or present, but when I look at the scores and the fact that we have administrators and then you look at the teachers, they're not lining up. There's strengths in one, deficits in the other, deficits or challenges, however you want to put it, and they're not lining up. And then when we're talking about administrators being in a position to review an employee and their skill sets may not necessarily be matching with those of the teachers, it begs the question of saying, do our administrators need a refresher on certain skill sets in order to adequately evaluate a staff member who may have a better skill set than they do? And I kind of wonder about that.
That's a good question. It requires constant professional learning by principals. March 10th, we're going to have a great opportunity for all of our principals, assistant principals to, for half a day. Mr. Herron's going to be there to welcome everybody with all the South County District, all the South Santa Barbara County districts are going to be together to go through a process of providing principals with a skill set on how to really understand a Common Core math lesson. Because none of our principals taught the Common Core. So this will be our second workshop that we will have. We will have a third one as well. And it's really a great opportunity for principals to look at, they actually examine videotape instruction. They have an opportunity to debrief, dissect it and to learn from our teachers on special assignment.
So I would, and that's great. I appreciate that and that kind of addresses the question that I had, which is to see if we can get to this point in time. I mean, it's never going to be perfect, I know. Administrator's not always in the classroom. And I think, you know, when you are that far removed, I have a problem even in my own job, when I have, I'm working with people providing services and I'm not doing that anymore. And then I'm sitting there going, okay, so if I put myself in that shoes, which I've been there, how would I do that? How would I approach it? And so it's always that kind of balancing game that you have to play and I think it's really important. And this does bring that sort of issue to light and say, you know, how can we address that more adequately and make sure that we have, we're doing a fair job and we ourselves are sort of holding ourselves accountable to that. I mean, I'm speaking to administrators that we do that on a constant basis or that they do that on a constant basis. And I appreciate the fact that Dr. Cash is pointing out that, you know, that's happening and that it's a constant process that needs to take place. And so I think this brings a little bit to light, not all of it, because it doesn't explain everything, you know? Administrators bring their own strengths to sort of looking at the work of teachers. But I think that, you know, it's something that I think we should look at and kind of figure out, can we address that? I mean, I do appreciate the fact that we are looking at it right now, but it's just a constant thing that we have to be aware of.
I'll make a funny anecdote to that. I was in real estate for 46 years. In the last 26 years of my career, I never sold a house. But I sure trained an awful lot of people, judged an awful lot of people, counseled an awful lot of people, salespeople. So I sure knew what I was doing, I just didn't do it. So I think we have administrators who probably know what they're doing and have some ability to guide our teachers and judge our teachers and account for our teachers, hopefully.
And I think that's what I'm getting at. It's not a question of that I don't trust administrators doing it, but I think all of us who have done that, you know, and I'm sure our board president would agree that even when you do that, you still have to engage in your own professional development so you're ahead of the curve sort of. And that's what I'm getting at. So how do we do that and make sure that all of our administrators are doing that and have that ability and that opportunity? Because I know you were addressing it in different parts, especially when it comes to administrators and they have a big job and responsibility. I completely understand that and empathize, but I just want to make sure that we have, one, given the tools for them to do that and the other, the opportunity to do that as well.
Ms. Parker?
I wanted to say thank you. I mean, I think that there's a lot of really impressive work going on in human resources and I appreciate the way that you have shared this. I will say that I'm going to be pretty skeptical when it comes time to look at Teacher Match again. And that is because when I was trying to find the research on it, everything that I could find is really affiliated, University of Chicago, so on and so forth, they're research partners, but there hasn't been a lot of outside research yet. And so I'm reluctant to be, to pay for being part of the research, if you see what I'm saying? And one of my big concerns with that, I mean, that's something that Dr. Cash has brought up before, you know, about being careful about using the metrics from a company when that's all there is, since we just had that conversation about Read 180. But the other piece of it really is tied in to our desire to recruit in a legal and open way certificated staff that are bilingual and bicultural. And I know that Teacher Match is sort of aware of that issue, but I don't know, I doubt that they have the data. I don't know that there's any way that we could gather the data in terms of who completes and who doesn't complete and who is successful and who isn't successful and what is their first language? What is the effect, you know, on a timed test like this? How does that affect the outcome of Teacher Match? And so are we working against ourselves and can we know if we're working against ourselves? And so that's a concern for me. So I just want you to be aware of that. I know that we don't need to look at this until the summer, but.
I think that's an important point that you're bringing up. And I think that that's why, you know, when we first start looking, we start looking for what kind of skills, what kind of skills other than just the score does this candidate bring to us? So that it's not just one, that score is not the sole determinant. We look at many things to decide whether or not we're going to bring somebody to the table. And we are looking for a diverse workforce.
And I can say bilingualism is a skill set that we value highly.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. H4, first reading of board policy, 3100 budget and 3110 transfer of funds.
Ms. Chatey.
As you all remember, that there's a cap on our reserve. According to Proposition 2, the governor established a cap for all our reserve at 6%. I think Dr. Cash and I are, and I'm sure the board has heard a lot of information that the governor may relax this cap in the near future. And we're all hoping it happens before he makes the deposit into that reserve rainy day fund. So we are very optimistic that he will relax his reserve cap and so I'm here to present So, we are very optimistic that he will relax his reserve cap, and so, I'm here to present a possible, well, the board has actually asked, you know, bring back this board policy and to see if we can come to an agreement of what that percentage looks like. I just want to let you know how crucial it is for us to have some sort of reserve. The first one is management of our cash flow. Since we are a district that receives 84% of our property taxes, our LCFF in property taxes, and we only get those property taxes twice a year, we are relying on the funds in our reserve to carry us through along with our TRAN, our Tax Revenue Anticipation Note. Also, the volatility of our funding from the state and our unexpected costs and large purchases. But, one of my largest concerns is that we, if this cap is placed on districts, that we will not be able to maintain our credit rating for bonds and trans. And so, that is one of our biggest, my biggest concerns, and I'm sure you would agree that that's a crucial part of doing business at the district. So, in hopes that the governor does relax his cap, I've, this Exhibit A for BP 3100 is what shows as a first interim what a 3% reserve is, and that's 4 million. The current, that does not include our Fund 17, which boosts it up to 7.2 million, which is 5%. So, our Proposition 2 would be 6% at 8 million, that's our maximum amount. And then, one month of expenditures at 8% is $11 million. And then, our two months' worth of expenditures would be a 17% or $22 million. In your board policy, it recommends that, of course, we go up to 17%, but that's a board decision, but I just thought I'd put the higher one in. It would take us a long time with this durs and purrs increase to get to 22 million.
I'd like to put it in perspective a little bit, just go back in history to say why we're here today, because back on May 7th of 2014, in one of your interim reports or your budgets, I forget which it was, here's what it says. "The board also wanted to review Policy 3100 to possibly increase fund balance to ensure financial stability in the event of another downturn. In December of 2007, the Great Recession occurred, and the recovery has been slow. The board responded to this recession with rigor and was fortunate to have an 8.85% reserve to help weather the storm. The district's 2013-14 projected reserve amount is 3.54. If you include the special reserve, 6.72, still well below its 2007-8 level." So, what this tells me is we had an 8.85% reserve at one time when we needed it. And so, that 8% number up there, between that and two months, would take us back to that 2007 pre-recession level, which, you know, we were fortunate, we had it.
We were very fortunate.
If we didn't have that, and that, you never know when that time might come again, I guess, so...
And that's what the governor is hearing from everyone, that they feel that, the districts feel that they have to weather this out because we can't rely on the state.
So, I guess the question before us is, do we want to put in our policy a specific amount, percentage for a reserve? And if so, what that percentage might be? And this is discussion at this point, first reading, so it'd be interesting, I'm sure Dr. Cash and Mr. Day would like to know anybody's feelings on that. Mrs. Parker?
In terms of the eight, when you're talking about the 8.85%, I mean, it very quickly went down to 3%. But, and so, we were, you know, it was still super hard, and we went qualified, and it was a difficult time. But, I guess, I, in some ways, I could see that it makes some sense to put a larger number in than 3% in terms of a goal, being careful with it, because, you know, I think 17% is too high. And I, it would be cuts in services to students over time as we tried to get to that 17%, and I just feel like that that is probably too high of a number. But I also want to be cautious. I mean, we can put in the board policy that the number is, say, 8%. But, when ed code has a different number, then I don't know that it will ultimately make any difference in terms of what expectations are, for example, with our bargaining units. And, you know, if we're, I just don't know how much, how set in stone it becomes. Is it just a guideline for a board as a number to shoot for when there is no really any outside district legal backing for having a particular number?
Well, we could show and apply to the county that that money is needed to do whatever, if it's facilities, we can put that, those funds away that we're projecting to, you know, go out and do, get rid of a portable a year, or whatever. We can start growing that reserve for future costs. That is very much allowable. So, even though the 6% could be a cap, you can go above that 6% if you have plans for that, those funds, and restrict them in your budget as such.
And then, I guess my other question would be, you know, in good years, it's easy to put aside and say, oh, it's 8%. But then, what happens when the first bad year hits? And there'll be enormous pressure on us to, you know, pretty much immediately go into that reserve to try to smooth, you know, weather things over for maybe one year. But, you know, we've seen, it can be a five-year process. So, I don't know what happens in that case. Are we trying to tie a future hands board? Is it good to try a future board's hands? Let me put that the right way. I don't know. So, I'm curious to hear what my fellow board members have to say.
I think it's really challenging and difficult to guesstimate, because it's a guess in terms of what would be appropriate in a future year. You know, prior to 2007, did anyone sitting up here have any clue as to what that number would look like, you know, in terms of what they would need as a board to weather that period of time? I don't think there was any sense at that point in time. So, having a solid number is, you know, it's a little bit of a crapshoot for everyone in this room. Having said that, you know, I think we could put in place maybe some guidelines in terms of that, or as you're proposing, you know, if we were to have above 6%, what would that be? What use would that be? And perhaps that's sort of maybe a starting point of what we would use that for. But in terms of having it for weathering a storm, I think it's really challenging. I don't know what that number would be and what would be comfortable. Is it one month expense? When we're looking at using that month of expense to go over a fiscal year? Is it two months when we're doing the same thing? I don't know if that, there's an easy answer for that, because at the end of the day, this board's still going to have to make a priority choice to figure out, how are you going to use that 8%? Or the 17, if we ever chose a 17? And it's spread around. And so, I think that's really challenging. So, at the, you know, for me, I think having some guidelines, trying to figure out, like, how are we, what way we would propose to use anything above 6% would be probably a good starting point for me.
Ms. Edelson?
I feel that the one month of operating expense makes sense, at least, as a minimum, so the 8%. And then, from what I see on this, the board can always change its policy, so, I mean, it's looking at it as, this is the intention at this stage, and then whoever comes next is looking at it from their standpoint.
And not only can the board change the policy, the board can spend the money.
Exactly.
Without changing any policy.
So, it's the intention that, you know, we have the rainy day, you know, put away, but at the same time, it's a concern that, you know, it's only as stable as those of us sitting up here.
Well, as you know, I asked a while back, is there any way we can put money in reserve and make it a super majority to spend it? And the answer we got back was no. So, I'm in favor of the eight or 8.85. Some numbers, and it's not designed as to how we're going to spend it, it's to have it if we need it. Right now, it seems like every time we get a report, the focus is on 3%. Did we make 3%? Never, hey, did we make 5% or did we make 7%? It's always, hey, we inch through and made 3%. I think we've got to change our mindset and have as a benchmark the desire to retain more money for a rainy day. I am forgetting now what that 17, I forget why we put that money aside, and I just forget why we did that, and what were the parameters of the motion when we did that. So, maybe someday we can look back and see why we did that, or maybe you know why we did that.
In Fund 17?
Yes.
So, we, well, what our goal was, and the district, that Fund 17 is like a savings account.
Right.
You can move it in and out, no regulations.
But we did something purposely to do that. We made a conscious decision to put it in there.
I think that the district office did that. I think the fiscal, no?
We'll research that. Our recollection might be slightly different, but we'll find out what it was.
It was in there for a particular reason. It came from, it came from a specific source.
It was the RDA.
RDA, and we put it in there, and then it got morphed into maybe a Common Core fund if we needed it.
If, yeah. And the board asked to have specific instructions on how they were, how you were going to decide to spend it. You didn't want us to just go ahead and spend it.
Spend it. So, it was sort of put aside as a safety valve to be there. But we've had to use it to maintain the 3% at some point, I think.
Briefly.
Is part of seven, is the 3% of 4 million? How much money is in 17 now?
About 14, I mean, 4.4 million.
Yeah, because that only shows a difference of 3.2 going from 3% to 5%. So, is part of that Fund 17 in the 3, to get to the 3%? Are we using part of it just to get 3%?
No.
Then this, it seems like there's a million dollars missing.
No, well, that's, the current reserve includes 17.
I don't know. But, I think we need it. I mean, I'm a proponent of saying to ourselves, we're going to have this fund be more than the minimum, and aim at, not next year, aim at doing it as a matter of course, to have a rainy day fund when we need it. So, I'm happy with the eight or 8.85, just to get us back to 2007, but that's where I would go.
Dr. Paz?
I think my reference to figuring out where we're using our funding above the 6% is in reference to the fact that we are capped at eight, at 6% currently, a prop 2, unless that changes. So, having some sense of where we're going to use it, so we can get to the 8%, I will do that. I agree that, and that's what my earlier points were, that no one can anticipate what you're going to use that 8%. If we get to that 8%, no one in this board even knew at that point in time what was going to be used. So, I'm not, I think my point is not to argue that we shouldn't get at 8%. My point is to say, how are we going to get to that 8% right now, given that we have a cap at 6%?
The cap is in name only. The cap, I mean, I would rather presume that the cap's going to be removed at some point, and start the process, because it might take us several years to get to 8%. But in that meantime, hoping that the cap gets removed. And even if it does get removed, if it doesn't get removed, we have several years, well, we have some time.
The state has to make certain reserve amounts. They have to do 8% capital gains and that, and all these, these five things, and I think I stated this in our first interim, what those five things have to happen for that to get in, for them to make that deposit. It's happening sooner than they thought it was going to, because revenues are coming in really well with the state. So, we're hoping that, you know, with all the pressure from all the units and the groups out there, that that will not happen, that they will relax it, maybe they'll go to, you know, three times what your reserve should be, which would be 9% for us. So, that's where I'm thinking it's going. I don't know what Dr. Cash has heard.
Even if we set our policy is 6%, that would be a step forward, because right now we're operating at 3%. If we get over 3%, that's the yardstick, right? And so, we, so, we're aiming at 3%. I mean, in reality, we've never said we have to be at four or five or, you know, the 5%. We've been there, we've done it, but not as a conscious, you know, Meg hasn't got direction from us, they get that to 5%. It's, hey, keep us at 3. And I think that's the mentality that has to change.
Well, I mean, I think that for me to kind of get a sense at 6 or 8, it would be much more of like, what does that timing look like, you know, and what would that, what would our best guess estimate be, so that we're comfortable going at 6 or 8%? And we time it so that we can get to that without sort of playing this crapshoot with the state, and hopefully, they won't make the deposit before we get to that point in time and do all of that. It's just, I'm not comfortable necessarily going in that direction and feeling like, okay, are we, are we not? It just seems a little ambiguous, right, at this point in time. I mean, I'm happy to shoot for the 6% and start that off, and have another further conversation in the future, and revisit it when we get to that point in time, but I'm happy to do that.
Hypothetically, if we got to 11 million, and all of a sudden, the cap kicked in, we'd have to spend 3 million. I think, I know a way we can spend 3 million. So, I wouldn't worry about getting there, because I think the state said you have to spend it. Could you spend it, Dr. Cash?
With the board's astute guidance, absolutely.
How about, Dr. Roddy, could we spend it?
There'll be a lot more information on this at first interim in a couple weeks.
You know, I'd like to see us, personally, I'd like to see us make a conscious decision to try to get to a certain amount, whether that's 6 or 8, or in stages, I'd like to do it.
I agree.
Mrs. Parker?
Ask Mr. Herron, is there a, you know, we talk about economic uncertainties in the policy, we're talking about rainy days. Is there a definition that we could include as part of the policy so that there might be some future guidance about what the intention of the board is as to when that fund gets tapped? I don't know if there's something out there already that we could just uplift and use in the school business services world.
I can find out.
That would be great.
How about 3110 Transfer of Funds?
That's a really easy one.
Yes, all been eliminated.
It's all been eliminated. So, basically, we're asking that we removed all the Tier 3 categorical flexibility, because there is no categorical 3 flexibility. So, basically, what only remains in 3110 is that you give us permission, or the board has permission, to transfer funds throughout the year.
As you scroll down to the very bottom, keep going. No, back up. There's a lot of sites there, citations about government codes, and some have to do with Tier 3. I noticed you eliminate a lot above it, but do any of those there also need to be removed? I don't know. I just noticed that the Tier 1 in 42605. It's minor.
Yeah, I would, no, there are some that do. I mean, adult education, Tier 3 categorical flexibility, PAR, yeah, those things don't exist.
Those are all of the categorical flexibilities.
Yeah. Yeah, we would eliminate those as footnotes.
I pretty much would say under, after Tier 3 categorical flexibility, that whole, everything below that goes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That one can come back on the...
Consent.
On consent?
Consent.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know about the first one, but I don't know how you want to bring back the... I don't know about the first one, but I don't know how you want to bring back the...
Well, I think what I've heard, the kind of a consensus is that you'd like some parameters built in, and you'd like a specific percentage brought back as a basis of discussion.
And maybe that would be a discussion with the interim, because there'll be more information with the second interim.
Sure. And I'm going to get, I'm going to get a legal opinion regarding Ms. Parker's question in relationship to the ed code conflict with a board policy in relationship to a reserve for economic uncertainties.
Versus just a plain reserve?
Correct.
If you don't identify it, maybe it's better than trying to identify it.
Yes.
Okay. Third reading, discussion of Admin 6153.
This is, I had promised Ms. Idelson that tonight we were going to clear up some questions in relationship to this, and then earlier today, we discovered that, in fact, the law had changed again, particularly in relationship to TB testing. And we have, I had so promised you that we were going to hopefully have some clarity here, when we have received no guidance from the county yet in relationship to how to operationalize the new law. So I had hoped that, you know, we, what, I mean, what I don't want to do is have the board engage in a conversation, provide direction to staff, and then have us come back two weeks from now and say, well, that was really a wonderful discussion, but now we've been told we need to do it this way. So, and I apologize, but we didn't find out until, I don't know, six hours ago or something was when Dr. Christensen told me. So with your permission, we'd like to bring this back after we get, and do we think we can even get that operational guidance from county in two weeks? We don't even have a timeline. Yeah. Well, we'll look to do that. But in the meantime, how can we help families with some clarity in relationship to what we currently know to be the law?
I think there were questions on the away field trips, and those still stand that TB testing is required and fingerprint is required, correct? If it's overnight, so as that matrix reads for the away field trip of one night or more, you're going to require those two items, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll relay that to people who've been asking me questions, or relay them to you?
I'd have them speak directly to their principal.
Okay.
Yeah. But, and we will, we'll, we've asked for clarification on the law change, and as soon as we get it, we'll bring it back with a revised matrix if, in fact, it does change.
Okay. So it's a question whether they're going to require the TB test, or?
Well, they are going to require, and they've, Dr. Christensen has the exact language.
This is Assembly Bill 1667, and it's basically talking about, in some situations, replacing the TB test requirement with a TB risk assessment questionnaire, which still has to be done by a health professional. And the idea was to save statewide over $3 million. So, again, we don't have any implementing instructions. We'll continue doing what we've done until we hear, you know, differently. So we just, we're just passing, no instructions yet.
When Dr. Christensen read that to me, I just went, oh, that's very clear, isn't it? So hopefully, we'll get guidance from health, county health.
All right, thank you.
And I just want to be clear, because the matrix is something that the district has developed. It's not part, I mean, it references the AR, but the law is vague. I mean, the law requires fingerprinting. It does, but when it talks about TB testing, it's always about frequent and prolonged contact. What does that mean? And I was just looking at AB 1667, and again, goes back to for school district volunteers with frequent or prolonged contact. It mandates a TB risk assessment questionnaire. And then, so, you know, frequent and prolonged contact.
So we'll do our best to get some guidance and bring it back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Coming events? I think we've covered most of them. Honor Band Thursday night, the Finland Educational Program, also the same night. Tomorrow night, there's the Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee meeting at 4 o'clock at Lacombra. A lot of music programs. Anything else for coming events? How about future agenda items? We passed out, I sent out my understanding of what is still on the docket and what has been done. So if anybody has any changes to those, please let me know. And Dr. Cash has sent out a notice that we have a meeting coming up with the city in April, and we had on our list four items that he wonders, what do we want to do about them? And I don't know who put those on, there's no indication of who added those at that city council meeting. But Dr. Cash has asked questions about, do we still want those discussed at the city?
Yeah, it would be great to know, because I'm going to be meeting soon with city staff.
Do you want us just to email you or tell you now?
Whatever's best for you.
Just, can we, use of Cleveland as a community space? What do we mean by that?
I don't know.
Anybody know? Cross that one off. Okay. Update on El Puente closure, meaning an update on Ketsal. That's probably appropriate.
Great.
Facility use. I think Senator High School Tennis Court was the issue at the time. I don't know if it's still an issue or not, but are there anything else on facility use that, in general, we want to talk about with the city? Dr. Cash has junior high later, but is there anything on the high schools? It says facility use, is that high school, well, facility fields plus high school tennis courts? I don't even know what the current status of the tennis courts are, but...
There's really been no conversation. The status hasn't changed.
Okay.
It's the same as it was last year.
Nothing on that?
Not that I can think of right now.
Take that off. Library services, children's library, how would you like this framed?
The children's library renovation is starting, maybe started this week, last week or next week? It's starting. And so I think it'd be great for them to give us an update on...
I think it already started.
Yeah, it just did. So, an update on that. And then, I think it might be also really interesting to talk about if they have somebody they can talk about, library services particularly targeted towards people whose home language is probably Spanish, as our majority, you know, what sort of materials and services do they provide for Spanish speakers?
Okay.
It's interesting, I think AOK is creating a relationship with the libraries. And at Adams coming up, there's an AOK Central Library Collaboration on Dr. Seuss's birthday, along with a dinner at Adams School. So there is a collaboration with the library with AOK, so.
It would be interesting to get an update on the drought, because I believe on March 15, the city's going to have the opportunity to declare a Stage 3 drought.
I was going to say the same thing, and also, sort of, the information about the reclaimed water, whether that's on tap now or not.
Okay. We could certainly add to the conversation on the work we're doing in removing ornamental turf and replacing it with native. Okay?
Do we pay to have reclaimed water go to our sites? Does the entity pay for putting it there?
The what?
The pipes that get, for the, the water we use, reclaimed water, how does it get to our sites?
Don't know. I'll find out.
Anything else?
But if you think of anything else, because it is 9:30, if you think of anything else, email me and let me know, because we have plenty of time.
One other future agenda item, and again, probably not immediately, but as I mentioned, the ROP situation will be a huge change in two years that we need to prepare for, because after two years, we have to fund it. Then it gets back into, do we want to fund it? What do we want to fund? You know, currently, there's 13 employees that the county pays for, plus equipment and everything else that might have to be replaced. So I think we need a report just to give us a general feeling of, what's in store for us? I mean, what are we, what are we going to, you know, we talk about having a reserve, but we're going to have to talk about saving some money to go into our ROP.
No doubt about it. What the county's decision not to spend their LCFF money on ROP puts that burden on the district.
And it's a 40-year history, so we have some very successful programs at every school.
We do.
So we need to plan for that. That's to put that in the equation of planning. And so some type of report showing what the economic effect, if we took over the program as is, what's the...
$842,000.
Okay. Plus what we're already spending, a couple hundred thousand.
No, that would include our amount.
All right, okay, so 800,000. Okay. That's interesting.
But I, it's on our radar to bring forward a pretty fully informative, hopefully informative report.
Okay. I think that's it, unless I hear anybody wants to say longer.